I will call the October 15th Pennington County Commission Meeting to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Representative Mike Virtue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the body for which it stands, one nation with our own God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hannes, Commission Office Manager. I would respectfully ask that we remove item number 16 per the applicant's request.
Item number 15, are there any other?
Fifteen or sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? I'm sorry. Item 16, any other requests? I would just point out that Dustin Willett, our Emergency Management Director, was here. He said if you need me, send word down, and I intend to ask him to report on item 18, items from the Chair, on the storm, handling the storm situation. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended with item 16 removed. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly?
For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, I have placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 1st, 2013. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting, October 8th, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $3,223.09. To accept the official returns and issue the Order for Organization and Incorporation for the Formation of the Greyhound Gulch Road District as presented by the auditor. And finally, to approve the Maintenance and Snow Removal Agreement with Scenic Township Number 7 as presented by the Highway Department.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
We have to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 10, Agricultural Taxation Committee: Criteria for Classification of Lands as Agricultural. Commissioner Troutman and Brenda Whiting.
First of all, last week, we started through the review of what the taxation committee that the Commission had appointed has been doing, and I'm just going to review a little bit of that. We have been meeting every week, Wednesday mornings, nine o'clock, except for this past week. We divided into subcommittees, and we had two different focuses. We focused on county issues and then on legislative issues between the two committees. And because of splitting them, we were really able to get a lot done. Brenda, would you mind just saying real quick what you did on the county side?
Sure. Brenda Whiting, on the county side, the first thing we talked about was how ag usage is validated and forced for ag property, and the second determined how timber on a piece of property is the true usage. There was a lot of research and information brought forth. We had formats presented by forestry professionals from the timber industry, and the Department of Equalization was good about coming forward and visiting with us about the ag taxation form that was in their list of things that they could do, but we made some changes, visited with them, and they did send that out. And part of the coalition was also to make sure that members knew that they needed to get this information back to the Department of Equalization. If there were questions, call them. Don't ignore it, to please respond. They'd spend a lot of time and effort trying to send it out. So going forth from there, there was a lot of information given from the surrounding states that we discussed. There was a lot of information brought forth about what the Department, United States Department of Agriculture and the Department of the Census looked upon as what was criteria for income for ranchers and farmers, and we've come forth with a little bit of information on that, of that $1,000 a year qualifies on that. So going forth with the South Dakota codified law, those are some of the changes that are being taken forward to the legislation, and hopefully, we will get something done in peer this year.
The Legislative Subcommittee really focused on South Dakota codified law 10-6-31.3 because that's what we, as a county, have to deal with in those smaller acreages that may or may not be classified as ag. One of the things that our committee absolutely agreed on is that the purpose of how that parcel is used should be ag. So if you look at the proposal that came from the Legislative Research Council through the efforts of Mike Virtue, you'll notice that there is really two criteria, but every parcel to be qualified as ag must have an ag purpose, and that makes sense. And then you could straighten out the other two criteria, which were confusing, and we did spend a lot of time listening to the way that our state's Attorney's Office has to defend this law and the ambiguities that they have run into over the years, as well as Director of Equalization and their frustrations. So we were really thankful that they were giving us good input and that we were trying to come up with a more clear law. One of the things I want to just talk about, and these are some of the issues that we felt needed to be addressed in that law. First of all, in addition to the fact that the use of the property must be ag, we also had a lot of concerns with contiguous ownership. This is kind of interesting because you can talk to other counties and they all handle it a little differently. It's not clearly defined, and so we felt that that needed to be addressed. Another thing that seems to be a confusion is how we have to define a family income. What is the family, and how can we define that better? So we have looked at that. Those drafts are drafts, of course, and we want to get input from you, of course. One of the things that we are going to do, and I don't know, Mike, do you want to say anything about any of this?
No, I just want both groups to, if they can, agree on one approach, and that way we approach it fair without any arguments against from either side here.
Well, you know, one of the things that I appreciated is Jay Patrick and Shannon, Jay Alderman, Patrick Grody, and Shannon Ribbiger reviewed those documents, and you'll find in your packet a summary of their concerns, and we want to hear that because we feel it's important, and it needs to be addressed because they're the ones who have to deal with this. And ultimately, the hope is that we will have a clearer law that the taxpayer understands, the Director of Equalization understands, and the County Commission understands. Tomorrow, we will be having another meeting, nine o'clock, at the Extension Office down at the Fairgrounds, and we've invited local commissioners and Directors of Equalization from other counties, as well as other legislators. And Bob Wilcox from the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is coming. And the purpose of that is going to be to discuss the proposed legislation and get feedback. We know that we need to have some kind of finalized version by the end of October, and we will have. Certainly, I hope you'll all be there tomorrow. We really need that input to make it the best changes that we can. We've worked diligently, and I just hope that you'll be there tomorrow because we need you there to get your comments. And I don't know, Brenda, do you have some other things you want to add in there?
Well, I appreciate that the Commissioners have taken their extra time to come to one more meeting each week, and it hasn't always been the kindest, but we've been pretty good about leaving our differences at the door and trying to come up with solutions rather than just a big gripe session for two hours. And I believe we've brought forth a lot of information from both sides, and it's been really good, and I do appreciate everybody showing up. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair?
Does anyone have any questions of Nancy, Brenda, or Representative Virtue? Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One comment, I would be, and Nancy mentioned the meeting tomorrow. I'd like to see this whole crowd be there tomorrow because you're going to have your chance to explain it to the legislators, to our Executive Director of the South Dakota County Commissioners Organization, who hasn't been much help over the years on this since he lives back in Stanley County. So now's the time to say your piece tomorrow morning, nine o'clock.
Anyone else? In terms of where we are and what's next, I'd like to call on Director of Equalization Shannon to tell us what the sequence is, the timetable, for moving forward or whatever falls into place. But at the present time, the processes in your office that will be directed toward these kinds of properties, what's the timetable and that sort of thing? We need to understand what we're working with.
Short term, right now, we have mailed out letters to all of the property owners that could be affected by the recent change in the acreage criteria, and we're getting applications for ag classification back in the mail. We're reviewing all of those, and we have the next couple of months to go over all of those and set the assessment on those for the March 1st assessment notice. Any changes there will affect the 2014 assessment, will be indicated on the March assessment notice, and will impact the taxes paid in 2015. Now, that's the short term, that's this year, and that is a review of not all of the ag parcels in the county, but a significant number of them. I would like to then continue on and review all of the others that we didn't catch this year. I don't know as if we can do all of those others next year or over the next several years. But then, long term, would like to, every few years, do this all over again because ownership changes, situation changes, property changes. The preferred timetable for a lot of counties seems to be about five years, which is good. So long term, we would like to do a review of all ag parcels every five years in the same manner we're doing now.
In terms of the properties that fall into consideration, the issues we're talking about now, how many properties are we dealing with?
Right now, well, we mailed just over 600 letters out. We're looking over all those. That's not 600 properties because we might have mailed a letter to a property owner and he has two or three parcels, which him and everybody else would consider only one property. So I think our 600-some letters is the amount of, the amount of letters we mailed out, but higher than the number of properties we're looking at. And I don't know how many, that's that many parcels, but, you know, again, a property owner could own several parcels.
Prior to the change in acreage, how many did you send out?
Yeah, I don't know what you're referring to.
Well, when the acreage was at 40 acres, how many parcels, letters, whatever, did you send out then as compared to what you're doing now?
Well, since I've been in Pennington County, there hasn't been a review of the ag property. I don't know when the last time that was done in Pennington County. Now, every year, we do mail letters and receive applications from the property owners on quite a few properties, but that is properties that we find in the normal course of business and applications that we get in from the property owner, and not a overall review like we're doing now.
How many, how many appeals did you have this year total, all appeals considered?
At all levels?
All levels, all classifications?
I'm guessing, and I think around 2,000.
Appeals?
Yes.
How many of them were ag classification appeals?
I don't know. A very small number.
I see. So essentially, in the whole mix of things, the questions about administering the tax law by your office divides itself out to where the number in this category was quite small.
Most of the property in Pennington County is non-ag property, so we spend most of our time looking at non-ag property. The ag property assessment is generally a much easier process because we essentially get numbers from the state, and it's based on a soil survey that we have in the computer that simply makes it easier. But we spend probably a disproportionate number of our work hours on ag, although it is still a very small part of the assessment.
Another category that may or may not be contentious would be owner occupied. How many of those do you have in terms of appeals?
Similar to the ag, very few of that 2,000, but there's always several appeals every year over that.
So technically, the question of owner occupied versus ag use would be somewhat of a parallel, would they not?
The ag classification issue is a much bigger issue than the owner occupied. The owner occupied statute leaves less ambiguity. You own the property and you live in it.
Would it help your office if state law could be clarified on ag use?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a minute. There's an older gentleman out there. I wonder if we couldn't help him come up here and sit. I know it's a little hard for him, the gentleman in the red hat.
Anybody using these chairs?
These chairs right here.
Yeah, if we could just give, because I know it's hard for him to stand for a long time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other comments or discussion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I believe that we have certainly accomplished a lot of what the Commission was asking of the committee, and I still believe we need to go back to square one and move forward. We've got a lot of things, a lot of work yet to do, but I believe that if we make changes in the legislation and we, as a county, have moved on and done a lot of work and spent a lot of time and a lot of money doing that work because of that change to 160 acres, and then if it changes in legislative action in January and we do work again to take back or to change what we have already put in process, we are doing a real disservice to these taxpayers because we are bouncing them like a ball, and that's not fair to them when we, as Commissioners, have had some concerns and there's some justified concerns. I agree with that. But I feel like we are bouncing everybody around, and we need to step back and start over and make every attempt to clear up the law so that it's easier for Shannon and his department to handle it, it's easier for our state's attorney to defend it if he must, and it's easier for the taxpayers and the County Commissioners to be on the same page. So I just really believe we need to go back to that, and I will make that motion to set the amount of acreage to 40 acres that qualifies under a classification.
You preceded your motion.
Oh, I can't talk.
Commentary.
[laughing].
But I would ask Jay Alderman to make any comments he might have relative to the confusion that exists in state statute at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. First thing I'd like to do is just amend this committee, the group that's been meeting, all the folks that have had a part in this. It's been an incredible endeavor. I think we've made a lot of progress, a lot of great ideas, and I think, as it was said earlier, people put their personal opinions aside and just tried to work towards a common goal. So it's been a great effort, it's been fun to be a part of, and I do believe that we're going to end up with some policy changes at the county level that will make sense, that will be good to implement and use. I also believe that we're going to make some advanced progress and propose some good changes to legislation that's well overdue, and we're working towards that as well. As I stand here, of course, I have some comments on any number of issues, but I think, I don't know that this is necessarily the time. Maybe it's more about tomorrow when we talk about legislation. There's a, I'm really pleased with the policy regarding timber and the Timber Management Plan, and it's a several-page document that I think is wonderful. I think that really helps a lot. I do still have at least one concern with the definition of principal use involving removing the residence entirely from that definition. I think poses some issues that we will most certainly end up dealing with, which I guess I take the primary purpose of this whole project is to get rid of as many of those issues as possible because it's really difficult, in a number of cases that we see, to ignore that the principal or primary use of a parcel is, in fact, the house and very little of anything else after that. And I don't want that to just simply be forgot. I think we still have to address that issue in the definition of principal use. We have to vet that out further. So that's my one concern with that definition. Otherwise, I think the definition is, again, adds a great deal of clarity, and it's more user-friendly to both the Commission during Equalization Boards and the rest of the public that have to meet or try to understand what they need to do on their lands. So have that issue on that one policy, the timber, I think is fantastic legislation. Shannon and I, we've critiqued some, a couple of the proposed bills, and then we kind of took it upon ourselves here recently to put some of our critiques in the form of an actual bill that tomorrow, I think, we'll try to present and discuss and explain some of our language and what we're trying to accomplish, and certainly isn't perfect. We deal with this 24/7, 365, and it's still difficult for us to come up with the perfect language, the perfect paragraph. So it is a challenge, and it's a challenge that our legislators deal with every year when they meet in peer. It's not an easy process. It's very difficult. But we're making that effort, and I hope that effort carries through to the Legislature acting on it and helping us to improve that law. So appreciate all the efforts. I don't know, I'll stand for any questions you might have, but thank you.
Any questions for Jay? No, thank you. I got a question for Shannon, if I could. Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. Shannon, during this whole process, has there been any new policies adopted by the County Commission to give you direction on how to identify, properly identify, ag property?
Not to my knowledge, no. There's been some discussion of some guidelines that the Commission can use, but to my knowledge, they haven't been adopted.
Okay. And what's the, I can see that Commissioner Troutman is about to make a motion to roll back the prior decision of this board. What's the period of time, what's the latest that we could do that rollback and still have an impact to 2014 taxes due in 2015? And the reason I'm asking this is, all we've did is had a lot of meetings and a lot of good discussion. We got some proposed, but we don't have any legislation that people have agreed on yet. We haven't adopted any new policies for the county to give to you. So frankly, I don't, other than gathering a bunch of information, I don't think we've done a lot. And I'd like to see us do something before we back up and supposedly start over. You know, the whole idea of moving this to the 160 was to make some fairness in taxation so that people who have 39 acres or 30 acres and people that have 120 acres along Highway 16 or anywhere else, and their main purpose is not for agriculture, they may have somebody cut a little hay, but the main purpose is either an investment or it's a nice place for them to have their house and keep other people away, and they're claiming ag on that. And I don't think we've given you direction on how you should be dealing with those issues so we can make some fairness and equitability in the taxation. so we can make some fairness and equitability in the taxation. So the main question is, what's the latest date to have an impact?
I think November 1st is. But I'll make an explanation. I agree with Jay, what he says, the guidelines that are coming out of these committee meetings are generally good. The timber issue, I think that's a good set of guidelines. The definition of what principal use is, to define it at least for Pennington County, I think is very good. I have the same problem that Jay does with excluding the residence. I think that defeats the purpose of principal use. So I think that's a serious problem with it. But other than that, those guidelines I think are good regardless of where that acreage is. I don't think that changes the acreage issue. I think those are good at 160 acres. And they're, I don't think the county needs to adopt those. I think those are good guidelines anyways. I think they're good guidelines for the commissioners. The state law, there might be something good come out of that. Bills tend to change as they go through the legislature, so we'll see what happens there. But we could get some good there. Those bills will take effect next year, though. That'll be the 2015 assessment. So we're looking at, the upcoming assessment is 2014. Your property is assessed as it is November 1st of 2013 for the 2014 assessment. I would assume then that we are looking at your property on November 1st and the laws that we have on November 1st when we look at that 2014 assessment. So I think that November 1st date this year is the key date.
Okay. One thing I would say, you said, "I don't believe that we need to adopt some of these policies, timber and those kinds of things." I would beg to differ with you. I think you should insist that the County Commission adopt those so that when these properties come to appeal and you have three commissioners sitting there and two of them vote to go past or disregard their adopted policy, at least you can hold that up and say, "Look, you guys are the ones that told me to assess it this way." Because I know for a fact that that hasn't always happened in the past. And so I think you ought to insist that the County Commission adopt policies. This board should adopt them and be held accountable for them during the assessment process.
I agree. I didn't mean to say that I don't think the county should. I think the advantage I get from that is a board that sees that statute consistently across all board members, year to year. I get that out of this. The board needs to do that. Just me using these guidelines isn't good enough because when it comes to an appeal, I have to be, I have to face a board that makes a consistent decision every year for me to do my job consistently. And that would certainly help if the county adopted those.
Right. And I think every time there's a change on this board with new board members coming on, you should be bringing those back and having them re-adopted so you don't get some new board members coming in and taking off on their own on how they think these policies should be administered.
Yeah, I agree. That's probably true. If I could make the board do that every year.
Well, you can. You can come before the board. You can come before the board, you're an appointed department head, you can come before this board and say, "Here's the policies." And I'm asking to have them re-adopted by this new board.
And I could do that. Yeah, I certainly will, because it'll gain some consistency.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, I know there's not a motion made, but I obviously will be voting against it. I think it's been, by raising it to 160 acres, if we didn't do anything else, we got some people interested in this problem. I guarantee if we'd have left it at 40 acres, none of you would be here. The impetus for making change was because we changed it. If we would go back to 40, the impetus to make any changes is gone again. We just spin our wheels again. So I, and besides that, I really like reading the paper every day and looking at the letters and getting my heritage quite confused with me. Anyway, that's my thought, is I think they've made great progress and the progress is made because of what we did. And going backwards doesn't, I don't think, serve any purpose.
Shannon, one more question, if I could. You're saying that we have to make this change prior to November 1st. I mean, our first board meeting in November is like the 3rd, I think it is.
Those guidelines that we're looking at for the commissioners, I don't know if that has to be done before November 1st. Because we still have the law that governs it. Those guidelines we're looking at are just some consistency for the commissioners and the way they look at it. But the acreage thing, I think that has to be done by November 1st because we're looking at the property as it is November 1st and the law we have then. I don't know as if there's much difference between a legislative change or this change in the acreage that the commission can make because essentially the commission can change the law. November 1st, we're looking at the property as it is then and the law we have then.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, I have to go along with Commissioner Buskerd on this. And I wish that that motion would not be made until the final meeting in October. After the, so, but let me finish my statement. We can have a special meeting, we proved that last week, we had two, just bing bing without any problem at all. So we can have a special meeting just for this notion if that's what we need to do. But I'd like to wait and see what takes place tomorrow at the meeting with everybody there and our legislators there. Bob Wilcox, and again, I like Bob Wilcox, he's a nice guy. But every time we ask him to do something, he looks at Sioux Falls before he even nods his head one way or the other. And that bothers the hell out of me because we pay him a lot of money for our dues to be a part of that organization. So I would like to do that, and I'm sure the chairman could call a special meeting anytime he wanted to and take a look at this. But I want to see what happens tomorrow at that meeting.
Any other comments?
So, Mr. Chair, I am still going to make that motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
Sorry, Nancy. Fellow Commissioners, Chairperson Lundell, I'm Scott Gross. You know, I just, words cannot describe to me. I fail to understand your comments, Ron, on how do you think changing the criteria to 160 acres was the right approach? I don't see how a legislative body, which you are, can put the burden on the back of the taxpayers because of something that you have not done or your department has not done. The root cause of this problem is poor rules, poor regulation at both the state and the county level. So you chose, as a legislative body, to say, "We can't fix it, so why don't we put the burden on the back of the taxpayers and make them fix it?" Now, that flies in the face of everything, every common sense thing that I can think of. And I'm not here to say that there shouldn't be something done. Yes, there should be something done at all levels, at the state level. And I commend the AG's office for stepping to the podium and making an honest assessment of those things that need to be done. But you, as a legislative body in charge of this county, should have long ago addressed this matter and put in rules in place, insisted that the Department of Equalization enforce those rules, and we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation today.
I don't disagree with you.
You know, the way to go about this is determine what the problem is, get the right people in place to fix the problem, fix it and move on. We don't throw up our hands and say, "Oh, my God, it's raining. We have a problem. We don't know what to do, so let's put the burden on the back of the taxpayers to fix it." That is not the right approach.
Mr. Chair, I have to respond to that, Scott.
Let me finish. I'm not done yet.
Depends.
So take a step back. Let the committees do their part. Let them, you know, and I commend, I have the highest admiration for Nancy for everything she's trying to do and everybody that's on the committee. Let them do their work. But you have to play a role in this. Step back, take the burden off the back of the taxpayers. Let the process work the way it should work. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would like to know, how many of you folks have ever come to a County Commission meeting and complained about taxes or anything else that goes on in the county until this happened? Okay? And can you tell me what it was for? Just, okay, okay, there you go. So that's what we're trying to do. We have not had the taxpayers behind the commissioners or in front, leading the charge, until now. And this is the first time that we have gotten the attention of the legislators. If this hadn't happened, the legislators would have never been involved in this, I don't believe. Because we've asked them over the years, and I know one of the legislators has said, "Well, you never had your association there to even talk about." That's right. The association, half the time, Ron Buskerd is down there doing the stuff for the whole state when he's supposed to be lobbying just for Pennington County. Because our association didn't even show up on the legislative floor to say one way or the other whether a bill that's coming up is good or bad. And that's the problem that we've had. And I'm not showing it all on the legislative, we've got a bunch of new legislators now. Hopefully, we can get something done about this. I think they're all going to show up tomorrow at that meeting. They're all going to have their say, and I'd like you folks to show up and have your say. And then we can take a look at this, what it needs to do before the 1st of November.
Brenda Whiting, once again. In light of what's happened and having had the committees, I would ask you from the bottom of my heart that as a good faith effort to change this back to 40 acres today and let us move forward. We have people out there through this blizzard. A gentleman that I asked if I could use his name, Lynn Gray, owns 50 acres. He leases a lot of other land. Some of it next to him was sold, the 40-acre parcel. He runs 100 cowcalf pairs. He's lost 50 of them. He also lost 19 horses. To bury your horses and to bury half your herd, that's a hard, hard thing to do. We have another gentleman by the name of Bud Ireland, retired, lives three miles east of Ellsworth. He lost about 80%. He runs about 40 cowcalf pairs. These are small acreage people that I know of in the last 48 hours that were tremendously affected. And this is going to be, again, a trickle-down effect. These people aren't going to be able to buy new cars, they're not going to be able to go out and do the things they were planning. A lot of other people in this county are also affected by the government shutdown. But I would ask you to please go back to the 40 acres and continue to work with us. You did get our attention. You did. We aren't going to back down and we aren't going to give up. And we are going to go forth to the legislature. If we don't get it all done this year, we'll be back next year. And you probably will see a lot of us on a continual basis at the county commissioners' meetings from now on. But please consider this and do it today rather than another special meeting. We'll be there tomorrow, we'll be there the following Wednesday, and we'll be in peer. We've already agreed to Virchill that if he agrees to run with it, we'll be behind him as many times as needed. So please reconsider this.
We've had a lot of comments. And I think if we reviewed them all and could put them in perspective, we would recognize that we've all learned something from this, that we can all do things differently. And I especially appreciated Commissioner Holloway's comments about the county and adopting policies on a regular basis. Because I think, right now, you could look in the county books and there would be policies that were adopted 20 years ago that no one even knows anything about. So a current review definitely is something that should happen on a regular basis. So when you point fingers at somebody, remember there's three of them pointing back at you when you're going like this. And we can all do that. And we can all recognize that if you say, "Who's to blame?" or "Who gets the credit?" Those are not important at this point in time. I commend the attitude, the effort and the dedication of the coalition members. And I appreciate the courtesy of everyone who has interacted in this situation, including the commissioners. And I think at this point in time, we need to do something. And if we do have a motion, I would accept that at this point.
Mr. Chair, I would move to set the amount of acreage to, back to the 40 acres and no longer keep it at 160.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, yes, we may. Does anyone have any comments relative to the motion?
Yes, sir, I have a comment.
Yes. About the motion.
About the motion.
My name's Steve White. I've got 68 acres. I got 60 in alfalfa. I got one tree in the whole property. And you guys are affecting me because what I hear, what I heard from this gentleman here, this is the first time I've come to one of these meetings, is that you've got some angst with some people. I'm a military guy. The commander has got to take a look at what's going on. If he's got a problem with one person, he doesn't make a shotgun blast and tell everybody they can't do something. That's bad leadership. Okay? So there are two things going on here. Number one, you're affecting me when I don't think any of you would say that I'm not trying to be agriculture. Okay? 60 of 68 acres and five of that is also fenced off for animals. Okay? I'm as agriculture as I can get. And the other thing is that you're running these guys over here through a bunch of hoops and spending our tax money when you're not even really sure we're going to do something. That's bad economics. So you've got two things to think about here. You're messing with all these people for one or two people that you got angst with, and you're screwing around with this guy that costs tax money. Don't do that. Change it back. I know that, I don't like politics. And this is why I don't like politics, because there's too much bullshit going on. Okay? I know you guys are stuck with a bunch of stuff and you're trying to do the best you can. I would urge you to take a look at the system, and if the system isn't responsive, change the system. Change the system for changing the system. Okay? But don't mess with us and spend tax money with this guy needlessly. Please, put it back to 40 acres. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? If not, roll call vote.
I'm Shirley Alexander. And I was sitting in your position several years ago, quite a few years.
And I was sitting in your position several years ago, quite a few years ago. And I noticed that it is the 15th. You only have 30 days. A decision as important as this, I don't think can be done in 15 days. And we do have to send those notices out. I know that. And I would rather go back to 40 acres and take a little time and get it right than make another mistake. And that could happen when we don't have enough time to do all this. And if we have any more trouble with weather, we just won't get it done. We have enough trouble now. I heard all the trouble that some of these country people are having, and some of these people aren't even here today because of the trouble. So I would urge you to wait, go back to 40 acres, and give this committee some time to do it right. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Scorsese. I don't know how many people fit in the situation. My wife and I bought property this spring, not knowing the tax law changes and it changes the payment quite a bit, quite a ways out there. The extra money we're trying to get ahead of the deal will be gone. My boots are muddy feeding my residential cows this morning. And I, I do rent ground, and just winter, intend to winter, and cab my cows on just 40 acres. But I assure you to keep it that way. It affects personally quite a bit.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and have our roll call vote.
Bushman?
No.
Davis?
No.
Holloway?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Prentiss?
We'll take a 10-minute recess.
Well, I don't know if I'm coming tomorrow or not. I've made up my mind. We're done because the legislators are going to see, see they made a mistake.
Okay, we'll call the commission meeting back to order.
The impetus to change of thought.
Call the commission meeting back to order. And the next item on the agenda is item 11, a reconvenance request for ID 512.
Good morning.
Morning.
You have in your packet a reconvenance, a request for Betty Welke has requested their property, legal description of Boland Placer Mineral Survey 1252 subdivision, lot J of lot 1 in Pennington County, South Dakota, that the property be re- conveyed into the name of Elizabeth Welke as previously filed. The taxes and costs due are as followed and must be paid by cashier's check or money order on the day that the commission passes the reconvenance, votes to authorize it. And they usually are paid by 2 o'clock of that day. You have before you, the amount due is $6,055. And broken down is all the information of the fees for all the departments that have been involved in this thus far. And I don't know who Elizabeth Welke is. I'm not sure if she's here.
Mr. Chairman.
He is here.
I will make the motion to re- convey the property upon payment of $6,055 and re- convey the property to the original owner.
Second. You have a motion and a second?
My feeling always was, and I think I related to Janet when I was around, that the county's job is to collect taxes, not to own property. And I think the sooner we get rid of property like this, the better off we are.
Okay, and you indicated there was, you need a check or money order today?
A cashier's check or money order by 2 o'clock today. And then we have a resolution that is signed by the chairman of the board that says that the reconvenance on the end to be made no sooner than the 21st day following publication of this resolution. So while we would do the paperwork and everything, it has to be advertised in the commission minutes because it is a reconvenance. And I do have that ready for your signature.
So in terms of us acting on the motion, do we need to verify that the check is here? Or?
I think my motion said upon payment of the $6,055. I don't know if they got it in it, but.
I didn't pick up. Yes, Commissioner Holloway.
When was, when was the property taken?
Property was, the deed was typed, filed September 25th, 2013.
Okay. And the taxes, is there, is there interest included in these taxes that are past due?
Yes.
That's included in the 5,000?
Right. And that's only good till the 31st of October. But in the past, anytime we've ever done a reconvenance, we've always asked for payment that day.
Okay. Thank you.
But I think the lady is here.
I don't have any questions. I have the funds to pay for the back taxes, but I haven't received any itemized information telling me how much I owe. So I would just like to get a copy of that so I can pay what's due.
Anytime we take a property, we have a file. When the person was notified, on June 19th, she was notified by the, served by the Pennington County Sheriff's Office. We, she was spoke to again on 7/26. She called wanting to know her options and was told she had to pay them by September 24th. She wanted to know who else got served, which we served the previous owner. And they, the previous owner. Marjorie called on 7/22, 2013, and says she doesn't intend to do anything. She sold the land. Elizabeth called, and someone called on 9, on 9/25, and called and wanted to buy the certificate. We told them the deed had already been typed. Elizabeth called again on 9/27. She wanted to pay off at that time what she was given, and that she was told she would need to write a letter to the treasurer and ask for a reconvenance that she would, and that she would be looking into extra fees. She said she tried to drop off the payment in the drop box, but it was not opened. She was told at that time the drop box is only open on October 1st, and we do not accept this type of payments in the drop box. And her, her exact words, there was no way in hell the county was going to get this property for amount due in taxes. And she was told what the delinquent taxes were at that time. She was written, given a letter that said the fees would be different because of all the offices now that have been involved in the taking of this if she wanted it re- conveyed. So she has been told the amounts several times on this property.
I have not been told the amount that is currently due. I didn't receive any notification of what is currently due. And I don't, I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just saying I'd like to have something in writing stating what I owe.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the item from the state's attorney.
Good morning, Cody Rutterman, Juvenile Diversion Coordinator. The purpose of this item is to combine two previous part-time employees without benefits into a single full-time employee with benefits position. The entirety of this position is paid with pass-through grants and is completely grant contingent. If the grants run out, the employee will be terminated.
Sure. Even with the added benefits, it's still paid for?
And the two different grant sources, one is the John T. Vicarage Foundation for Purposes of Truancy. The first part-time employee without benefits, their position would be to actively go to schools, meet with students who are truant, do investigation, and help out the diversion department, not to mention the state's attorney's office when they go through the formal process. And the second portion was for a data analyst through the DMC committee. So this FTE position will be doing both of those jobs.
Any other questions or comments? Nick, do you, oh, excuse me.
I just would like to clarify now, and I know that you said that this is paid for entirely by grants.
Yep.
What happens if the grants go away?
The employee has been notified that they will be terminated if the grants go away. We are going to pursue, obviously, other grants and other revenue streams, but if those can't be found, unfortunately, she's going to be let go.
Now, we've had two part-time people. And the part-time people, does that look that, that we would be better off to help two part-time people than one full-time? What's the situation? Why are we making the change like that?
The reason we're doing this is the caliber of employee that we can get with a full-time with benefits versus a part-time without benefits. The data analyst for the DMC work group is a very specialized position, and getting a person part-time without benefits would be extremely hard to do. And the person that we found perfectly not only has data analyst skills, but also is, has great personality for working with kids. So she is a one-in-a-million find.
And when do you plan on hiring this individual?
This person has already been hired for the purposes of the part-time employee without benefits for the John T., John T. V. Vicarage Foundation truancy portion, but has not been hired for the DMC portion yet.
Okay. And is this employee going to go full-time the 1st of the year or now?
This employee is budgeted to go full-time with your approval next week, at the beginning of the next pay period.
A full-time employee is budgeted already?
With, with the grants, that we have enough money to pay this person starting next week, including salary, all the other items that go along with that, insurance, so on and so forth.
Nick, do you have any comments relative to this transaction?
Good morning, Nick Sturd, HR Director, Pennington County. I did meet with Cody and with Liz from the JDAI, and we discussed this position that, like Cody had mentioned, they currently have a part-time person non-benefited doing the position. We went over the numbers, making sure that there was enough in these grants that it would be paid for. And then I stressed to them the same thing Commissioner Davis said, that if grant-funded positions, it has to be noted by the supervisor and by the employee that when the grant runs out, then the position runs out. And he stated he was aware of the rest, the state's attorney management team was aware, and he said he also made the employee aware of these grant-type positions because we have in the past absorbed some of these, and we're not doing that anymore, and that is made aware. So I'm comfortable, as long as the funding's taken care of, which they assure me that it is, and the person is aware, which he assures me it is, then I'm fine with it.
I'm making a motion to allow that, combine the two part-time, non-benefited positions into one FTE benefited position for the state's attorney's office.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 13 from the highway department.
Good morning, Hiney Jungi, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First item I have is authorization to bid for construction of the New Underwood Shop. Fennel has completed the design and the construction documents, and we're ready to move ahead and advertise and seek bids. Once we receive the bids, we're to come back to the commissioners for either accept them or reject them.
Mr. Chairman, where's, do you have the money in your budget for designing or building?
I have $280,000 in 2013 budget to fund the shop. And depending on where the bids come in, I do have some money I can move around in the 14 budget to pay for this. So it's all coming out of highway funding and not building, your building fund.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I have a comment. And I haven't seen this, your shop over there for a long time, but it was in pretty ratty shape when, last time I saw it, so I'm sure it's not any better. Except I think it's time, perhaps, that we stop spending money and take a look and see how much we're going to need to fix up the county roads and after the last storm. So we've gone by that building for a while, I think, at least till we're done seeing how much we're going to spend. Maybe we should wait till the spring to build and spend more money building buildings.
Any other comments?
Hiney, when would you start the, what are you thinking you'd start for building it?
Soon as we had contracts signed, we were hoping to get some concrete work done, get the foundation poured and the floor poured. And hopefully, I know it's getting late in the year, but maybe they could start the structural part of it. The, I think the deadline to have it completed is June 15th next year.
Any other questions or comments?
Hiney, Mr. Chair, Hiney, do you think that it would benefit the county as a whole to hold off on this just a little bit? Or do you think this is money that we won't have to get into to pay the bill that we're going to have?
I don't believe you will need to get into this money. I'd like to see a shop built. The one we have is in really bad shape. And when, in the wintertime, when it frost, it rains inside that metal building because of lack of insulation, and it's time to move. We talked about this for the last six, seven years, and we're finally to the point where we have a design and we're ready to go. And I would like to see it move forward.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Have we had any interest in anybody buying this piece of property once we're out of it?
At one time, the city of New Underwood was interested when we were over there looking, trying to purchase a commercial piece of property. The city was interested. Since then, they've built a newer building, and I do not know if they would be interested. One thing we could use it for, right now, we store our salt sand outside, and it's, we leach some into the, some of the groundwater. And I think it'd be, if this, I would offer to the city of New Underwood, if they're not interested, it might be a place for salt storage in the wintertime.
Again, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that's been bothering me considerably, is having that sand salt right there in downtown New Underwood, right next to the bank. And I've always felt that if we're going to build a new shop, it should all be located in one spot and get that out of the downtown area. So I don't know, could that be building be moved without tearing it apart? Or what's your thoughts about something on that order?
It's an old metal building bolted to a concrete foundation, so it could be moved. I haven't looked that far. And then the other option is, that's a fairly nice piece of property. If the building was off of there and cleared off, it would be a building site for a home or something, or a commercial where it's setting too. So, yeah, I could look into, I know it's bolted down to a concrete foundation, and maybe it's such a thing, we could move it to our new site and store our salt in there. So that's another option.
That's kind of what's in the back of my mind.
Okay, so the question at this point is whether or not we authorize the advertising for bids. Does anyone have any further comment or motion?
I'll make, or, I'll make a motion to authorize Hiney to advertise for bids for the construction of the New Underwood Shop.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion.
and maybe it's such a thing, we could move it to our new site and store our salt in there. So that's another option.
That's kind of what's in the back of my mind.
Okay, so the question at this point is whether or not we authorize the advertising for bids. Does anyone have any further comment or motion?
I'll make, or, I'll make a motion to authorize Hiney to advertise for bids for the construction of the New Underwood shop.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item I have is authorization to purchase three new Tana Maxxall trucks off the Sanborn County bid. This was bid last November, and it was awarded to Shein Mac Sales, which have offices here in Rapid City. They will honor the bid that was awarded a year ago, and the trucks meet our requirements. And after this last storm, with all the breakdowns I had, I would welcome some new, because these trucks are built to carry a snowplow and a sander, and they're heavy-duty, and we need to replace. I'm going to replace two 1988 dump trucks that are 25-years-old and one 96 that's 17-years-old. So that's the reason they're honoring last year's price. I don't believe you'll get that same price if we advertise for bids at this time, so.
Any questions or comments?
Same comment as I made the last motion.
Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase the three new 2014 Mack trucks from Shein. Sales and equipment are at Rapid City, in the amount of $104,848.
Each, for a total purchase of $314,544.
All right. That's the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This probably isn't quite contingent with the motion on the floor, but Hiney, the trucks that we have are, they bad, need to just repair? Or what's the situation with them?
They're getting old, and it seems like every time we send them out in a snowstorm, something breaks down, either hydraulics, or wheel bearing, or we break in springs. And so it's just, the repairs are starting to cost us more than trying to keep the truck running.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item E.
Next item I have is authorization to advertise for bids for tree removal. I don't have all the specifications put together yet, but I have identified three areas. All three areas are between 60 and 70 miles. One area is Nemo Road, Sheridan Lake Silver City area. Another area is, is South Rockerville Playhouse Road, working the way towards Hill City. And the third area is from Hill City West, going out Deerfield Road, South Rochford Road. According to the FEMA regulations, I have to do a lump sum bid, or I have to bid it per cubic yard or per ton. And I see no way that we can do a cubic yard or per ton basis, because we have identified about 10 different sites along these roads, all on Forest Service property to pile the timber and to try and get a scale in there or something to weigh each truck. Our intent is to do a lump sum bid for each area, and everything, six, seven inches and under, has to be chipped and ground up and hauled onto these sites we've identified. And everything else above seven inches can be limbed and cut, minimum of 20-foot-long down to 10-foot-long, whatever there is. And that's kind of how we're looking at bidding it. I did, I do not have anything set up for the Rapid Valley area at this time. Most of the people out there, and I'm really impressed with the, with the private citizens, they've cleaned up and hauled into the fairgrounds. A lot of the stuff out in the valley, there's still some there, and I see there's some piled here and there along the curb. And I did not get a chance to attend the meeting that the city had the other day, but I didn't know if there was a way, they're hiring a contractor to do curbside pickup. If there's a way, we can enter into an agreement with the city to utilize that contractor for the Rapid Valley area. If you so choose, I know we have, a decision has not been made on, on that part at this time. We do need to go out for bids to remove the trees in the county right-of-way, especially up in the forest and the timbered areas. There's big pine trees down in Cotton Woods, and, and it's, there's just no way that the county forces can do that and get it done in a reasonable time, so. And I'm following the FEMA guidelines, so if, if it is declared a disaster, we'll get reimbursed for all, but I think 15%, so. I'm here today just to get approval to put an ad in the paper. I don't know if I'll get there this week yet to get it advertised, because I want to make sure I have all the documents in place. And I'm going to get my specifications in a draft form, send it to FEMA, let them review it to make sure I'm meeting all the requirements before we actually place the ad in the paper. Because once the ad hits the paper, notice the bidders anyway, we have to have the documents ready for the contractor's review. So I'm just doing the first step, getting the authorization. When we have all our things put together that we need, then we'll actually see ad go in the paper.
Mr. Chair.
And Rapid Valley's the one I don't have a clear understanding on what direction we're going to go.
Yes.
Is your staff cleaning up any downed trees and broken branches?
Not right now, we're fixing equipment, and, and we've went back out and cut back to the, to the white line, so we have a clear driving lane on all our roads. And I have a lot of maintenance projects I'm trying to get back to. I got asphalt we need to finish up, and we got to mix up salt sand, and, and there's a lot of things going on that we need to get done too besides this. But no, I am not out actively cutting trees right now.
So your, your plan would be to hire all of this cleanup done, not have your staff do any of it?
I was thinking, if you wanted to do Rapid Valley area, I was going to use my staff for that. I do do a tree cutting. If this comes about, then I could use my, my tree cutting crew, probably in the valley later on this fall, to get all that stuff picked up. But I mean, my gravel roads took a toll. We need to gravel, we need to blade. We had a lot of help in the eastern part of the state with the ranchers plowing the roads open, trying to get to their cows. And they took gravel off the tops of the hills, and I got gravel roads that are actually muddy right now. I need to get to gravelling those. Quinn Township has called, they want us to go back in and fix up the township road where we haul the livestock in. They pretty much did a good job on turning that into mud, a stretch of it. And they're asking for us to re-gravel that road and blade it, and, and talk to emergency management, and that's probably something we're going to have to do, being we're the ones that directed all the traffic on their road. And, and the county should step up and take care of that. So I have a lot of things I need to get done, and I don't feel that my tree crew will be able to clean up all this.
Where, where's the money going to come from to pay this contract?
Well, I have, I have reserves set aside for future projects, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping we get declared a disaster, and we get reimbursed for, for some of this from FEMA. That's a question mark at this time, but it needs to be done.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Hiney, in your description of the directions from different places, was the Thunderhead Falls in one of those?
Yes. Nemo, Nemo Road, Sheridan Lake Road, and Highway 44. All our county-maintained roads off of that, Thunderhead Falls, Dark Canyon, Clayhorn Canyon. Every county road out that way has trees of one kind laying out in the right-of-way now. It came down in the storm. There's very few roads you drive on, you don't see some trees down.
Do you have any kind of educated guess what this is going to amount to?
Oh, you put me on the spot. I think it's going to exceed $100,000.
I think what, the reason he asked that is that he has a tractor and a loader, and he's run out of work.
It's going to exceed $100,000, but where at, I don't know.
I've got 50 hours on my tractor, and I think there's about $35 in diesel fuel that probably people bought, and that's fine, that's what it was there for.
Well, I was, I was hoping to do this on a labor and equipment-type bid, where, where the contractor would provide a crew with this much equipment, and then he would go out and clean it right-of-way, and then we would just track their hours and supervise them. But FEMA says that's not allowed. And the reason I personally wanted to go that way is because there's all kinds of public roads out in the forest that we don't maintain. We have a lot of road districts out there too. And I thought maybe if I, I set a contract up so that they could tag on to it, it'd be better to do a labor equipment rate, but FEMA will not allow it. So I'm going to have to refine it to strictly county-maintained roads and do a lump sum. And then it's going to be up to the contractor to drive the roads, decide how long it's going to take him and what equipment he needs, and provide us with the bid, and hopefully we get two or three bids so that we can compare them and get a reasonable cost.
According to FEMA rules, do they have to be union employees?
No, not that. But if we do it, we just will all do it according to FEMA. Yeah, because otherwise, if we don't, and we do get declared a disaster, they will not reimburse us.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize Hiney to advertise for bids for tree removal on those three designated areas.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hiney, and thanks for all your good work. Item 14.
Good morning again. In front of you, you have the draft copy of the county handbook. This was continued at our request from the October 1st meeting to allow for a full Board of Commissioners. Last time we were here, we heard from the sheriff, the state's attorney, the highway superintendent, the treasurer, who were all, gave you their opinion on the document you have in front of you. The only other person that was involved that wasn't here last time was KJ, and she's here today. Put her on the spot, I don't know if she has any comments. She, we, we've leaned heavily on KJ, not only due to her payroll experience, but just her Pennington County experience. We've really utilized her, and we wanted to thank her throughout the process. And so I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair. Yes.
During your process of meeting with employees and department heads, was there any discussion about the, the current policy that we have, where we pay employees on the last day of every month? We only pay once a month. Most places now are paying twice a month or every two weeks. And I know in the past, we've stayed away from that because of the additional work of calculating time and writing checks. But with the new computer system or program in the auditor's office, as well as the new program that accounts for timesheets, I'm wondering if that, if that discussion came up.
I'll let KJ handle that.
We really didn't discuss it during the portion of the employee handbook. We were already at the point in the spring where we were working on this, where we worked out most of the initial kinks on the Springbrook project. But just as a reminder, we have had for many, many years, the draw option, which allows employees to get up to 35% of their net pay, and they get that check today on the 15th day of every month. Of the approximately 640 employees that we have, I would say we are well over, well, I know we are because of the, the check count on it. Well over 500 of those employees do get a draw check on the 15th. All new employees coming in do. We still have some old ones that have always been used to that monthly pay and have never elected it. And we have incorporated that into the Springbrook project, and it will continue just as it has. So when we actually talked about the handbook, Commissioner Holloway, we really didn't talk so much about changing, like, to a semi-monthly pay period.
Well, in, in, in the handbook, it states that we just pay once a month. I mean, that's, that's on page 33. And, and obviously, if there's over 500 or close to 500, which would be vast majority of our county employees making that draw, maybe that's an indication that they really do want the twice-a-month or every-two-week pay period. And like I say, that's what most places are doing. And with our new program, I'm just wondering if maybe that shouldn't be something that we take a look at. And what brought it to my attention was looking at this policy, and we've made a change on that, as well as, you know, I've had some employees ask why we don't go with every two weeks. So I'm just throwing it out.
I don't know if there's, is there a section in here? I think, I thought there was a section in here about draw.
We could definitely put that in. The, that's discussed in the, it's definitely discussed in the orientation, and I know.
I guess I thought it was, I thought it was.
KJ, let me ask you this, is there any reason we can't pay twice a month or every two weeks?
Efficiency-wise, draw has worked so well for us. Employees who want to get a paycheck on, on the 15th do. At this point, I hesitate, because I've spent the last week setting up draw in Springbrook. But future-wise, could it be done? Of course it can be done.
And the program, the computer program you got, would, once you, once you set it up, then it would just happen.
Right. And, and, and what I'm saying is, literally, all last week, we were setting up Springbrook payroll with draw and end-of-month payroll. The system could, you know, it, it can go to twice a month, semi, bi-weekly. Those are all options that are there that make it available. As a, you know, when the draw occurred a long time ago, because prior to that, everything in the county was, once a month, we calculated pay at the end of the month. It takes, obviously, about a week to get the process of payroll in, and that's coming from all the departments. It takes me about three hours to process draw for the entire county. And other than email confirmation, communication with the departments, they do no work.
I guess I'd like to see you, and this is just for me, it's not from the whole board, that's very obvious, but I, I think it'd be worthy of the, of the HR department to see how other department heads, as well as employees, feel about taking a look at this. You know, I know from past experience, sometimes you, you hire a brand-new employee, and, and they work a month before they can get their first check. And, and, and then also with the draws, if you have some employee that maybe isn't as good of an employee as you'd like, and they up and quit you on the, on the 16th, and they've already got their, their draw, you run into some financial things. And that doesn't happen very often, but it does happen.
We fixed that problem when we changed the time card process on November, January 1st, 2013. We fixed that problem when we changed the time card process on November, January first, two thousand and eleven. We changed that so that new people coming in are hourly paid from that third Saturday to the third Saturday and then that old-school way that we used to do. We still have some that fall into that. But yeah, well, we're almost to three years of an effective date of having that changed. And we just don't, we don't, we solved that problem.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holloway, so if the verbiage that they have on page thirty-three where it talks about the once a month, I mean, does it, could it possibly have? If we approve this today, I guess where I'm heading, I mean, we have to change it again if we decide to go? Because I think twice a month is easier for people. It's easier for a lot of reasons. And
As far as the handbook today, the language can be corrected to state, because we do issue payroll. We issue checks twice a month. And we would need to, at this point, make reference to with the pick a draw option or the draw option, I just call it the draw option, and add that into that paragraph. In the future, if through the course of HR, department heads and payroll, we got to a point where we said, we're going to completely change things in two years from now. I mean, it's not something that would change overnight. But if we did that, then of course you'd end up having probably some kind of an amendment to get rid of the draw language. But for today, if you're hoping to move forward with approval, which I think many people are, my suggestion would be under pay days to make reference to the fifteenth of the month and the end of the month payroll dates in reference that the fifteenth is the draw option.
We could certainly do that.
So do you need a motion for that or do you want to just, how it understood you're doing the change?
If the motion were to be made that you wanted to approve the handbook with an effective date of January first with the discussed changes to policy three dash one-six, we could certainly do that.
If this is going to be effective January first, why don't we, why don't you bring it back in two weeks?
We could definitely do that. That's no problem.
I mean, that's, it's not going to make any difference. But I don't know. I mean, it was just my idea that maybe we look at it every two weeks, but maybe or every twice a month. But it looks to me like if we're not going to make this change to this handbook effective until January first, you've got some time to check with department heads and employees and see if we really do need to make a change there. And if there is, make the change and bring it back to us.
I can.
I mean, that would be my suggestion.
If the board directed the auditor's office to completely change to a either semi-monthly or bi-weekly pay period, we would not go live with Spring Brook payroll on January one. And of course, there's pure logic in going live with any payroll on January one. So I'm not saying that, of course, Spring Brook can do it. Right now, we're about fourteen percent into conversion and have our HR, our Spring Brook person is pretty much going to spend the month of November with us. So I mean, literally, we have converted. So I'm saying, you can make the motion, but we will not be, we cannot be prepared, Spring Brook, to go bi-weekly or semi-monthly January one, two thousand and eleven.
And that happens a lot. I mean, it happens a lot. We didn't have a policy. We can't implement it right away.
Zirker Day. Everybody is walking around saying it's Zirker Day, how long we've been talking about Zirker. So I just want to say that.
If that's the wish of the commission, I would certainly send out a, you know, information department heads and employees to get back to me with their thoughts and feelings on that and I could bring that back in two weeks.
Well, we'll see if it is the will of the commission. I'll make a motion that we have you investigate this, check with department heads and employees and see if there's an interest in going for every two weeks or twice a month payroll.
I can do that.
That would be my motion.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Thank you. Item fifteen.
Good morning. Hiney Jungy, Healthcare Trust Board Chairman at this time.
Different hat.
Different hat. You're all aware that First American Administrators are closing their office and Wellmark is taking over the healthcare. And the Healthcare Trust Board has met quite a few times and they passed a motion to go with Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield as our administrator of our self-insured healthcare plan. We also made a motion to go with their flexible benefit and with wage works. And also, they will not provide dental care under their health insurance. So we voted to go with Delta Dental of South Dakota for our dental benefit for our employees. So today, I just bring this information to you so you can review it and per, I think, the Public Notice Statutes and whatever. No action. We're not asking for any action at this time. But it will be on the agenda for November fourth for official action to authorize or by, or, well, I don't know. We recommend it, then the commissioners have to approve and actually sign the documents. So that would happen at November fourth. This is just, bring it forth to you as a recommendation from the Healthcare Trust Board. So that's all.
Thank you, Hiney. Any questions while Hiney's here? Otherwise, we'll see you on the fourth.
I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item sixteen has been removed from the agenda. And so we are now at planning and zoning consent agenda.
Morning. Dan Genison, Pennington County Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. Consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Second reading and rezone thirteen sixteen, incomprehensible plan amendment thirteen-ten, Allison Lewis, this land serving as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item B is a second reading and rezoning thirteen seventeen, incomprehensible plan amendment thirteen-eleven, Rapid City DSDP the eighth, LLC, Austin Rogers as the agent, and approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish either of the items or both be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented by the planning director.
Is there a second? Motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Item C is an appeal of a conditional use permit thirteen nineteen for Ken and Cory Tomovic. This is to allow for events of twenty people or less and to allow for a vacation home rental. This was approved by Planning Commission with twenty conditions. However, it was appealed and thus why it is before you now. However, I've talked to the applicants and to the appellant's and the applicants could not attend this meeting or not, the whole party could not be here. So they have requested it to be continued to the next meeting. Then I talked to the appellant's and they couldn't be here the following meeting. So now it's, they both agreed on the November nineteenth meeting and they both indicated they could be at that meeting. So that is my recommendation.
That'd be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? And Karen, are you, you're okay on the motion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Item D.
Item D is a first reading and public hearing of rezone thirteen fourteen, incomprehensible plan amendment thirteen oh eight, Mitch Moore's to rezon two hundred point seven-three acres from general ag to suburban residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensible Plan to change the future land use from limited ag to suburban residential district. Planning Commission had recommended to deny. County Board at the last meeting had indicated to deny it, but it was then thus continued to go to this meeting.
I'm going to make a motion to reconsider that. I gave notice at the last meeting that I would be making that motion and that is the one I want to do.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to reconsider item D. So we're now open for discussion.
Aye. Go ahead.
Do we have to pass that motion first so we can talk about it?
We do. We probably should.
Be a good idea.
All in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Now you can talk.
Okay. Well, so we can talk about it, I'm going to make a motion to deny it again.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. The reason is, I think the last time we decided that we were going to, the talk was mainly that we were going to deny it because we didn't know if he had any legal rights to this property because of the sheriff's deed. And after some talking with our state's attorney's office, it appears that he probably has more legal rights than I thought he had in the property. So I still want to deny it, but on the basis that it, we already had, a few years back, we approved, we got in a big hassle about a house out by that, what, interchange or whatever it's called, intertie. And because of noise and vibration, this is, this property is closer than that house was. And I just can't see putting residences that close to that thing until there's some resolution and dampening the noise and vibration in that place. So that's why I made a motion to deny it.
Yes.
The noise and vibration is coming from what?
The intertie.
That big power line.
Oh, that power line.
Yeah, remember, okay. The house that half a mile or three quarters of a mile away, I think the power company ended up finally buying that from the person. He couldn't live there any longer and we don't want to go through that mess nor do we want to put any homeowners or the power company through that mess again, in my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? Would you have, do you have a motion and a second? There are no further comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Yep. I agree totally.
Item E.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I may be able to make this very simple for the Spring Creek situation. And I just, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this Spring Creek decisions until such times that we find if we can use this money to take care of dead livestock in Spring Creek Basin, or if we can't. And then if we can, how much money we have in order to do it and how much money it's going to cost to remove any dead livestock that may be in that Spring Creek area.
Okay.
I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you have a particular date to which you want to postpone it?
Because I think that's up to these, planning to bring it back when they find out those answers.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment?
Mr. Chair, isn't this, I mean, how the money is spent is regulated ultimately by EPA and DENR?
It is, however, in our scope of work in our contract with DENR for three nineteen, we, you could request that that scope of work change to include those kinds of things. So basically, what I would have to do is request the change in the scope of work. The state would have to approve it and then we could redo the budget tables and such and allocate funds for that purpose.
And by the time all that gets said and done, there won't be any livestock to move. They'll all evaporate. And went into creek.
Have you heard any incidences of that?
In the watershed, I have not. I personally have not. And I talked to Justin yesterday and he had not. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't. We just hadn't heard.
So the process that you just explained that would have to go through, changing the scope of work and submitting app, which timeframe would that?
Typically, I would just have to submit a letter or a memorandum to Mr. Jaris and he typically gets back to me relatively quickly. So I could at least have a response to you by the next commission meeting, you know, as to, you know, what that would be. It's not unheard of that three nineteen funds are used for that purpose. It has happened prior. I kind of did some research prior to the meeting regarding that. So there is some guidelines or, you know, it's possible.
If these two projects were approved that we've got today, how much would still be left that hasn't, how much money would you still have in your fund that would not have been allocated?
Under that task, we would have, we would just have to move for the Riparian and the Stream Bank. Most of that, most of those funds have been allocated. But there is some waste in manure management money and maybe that money could be allocated towards.
And how much is in that?
I believe twenty-six thousand.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There was a gentleman that sent an email to the county commission office and that was passed on by Holly to us. I'm sure everybody got a copy of it. It made good sense to think about that if there was some problem in the Spring Brook watershed that take place. Now, I have no idea whether that's a problem or not. My guess is it's probably not a big problem because of the hills. It's an excellent place to have cows for protection. But there could be such problem out there and we may be looking for funds to take care of this thing and that might be an excellent place to use those funds. I noticed Holly kind of leaned forward in the chair. I don't know if she had something to say to mine.
No, I was just going to add that the commission office hadn't received any notification of livestock in Spring Creek watershed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Another question for Brittany. So you're telling me, once these, the apps that we've got right now that we're going to act, that we're being asked to act upon, once those are disposed of, there's only twenty-six thousand dollars left and once we dispose of that twenty-six thousand dollars, we're out of the Spring Brook, Spring Creek watershed management project? After the next twenty-six thousand dollars is gone?
No. Under task one, there's different, it's, the funds are allocated under, you know, essentially.
And those funds could be reallocated to, those, part of the application would be to reallocate whatever amount of money we needed to dispose of dead animals if there is a bunch of dead animals up there.
Correct.
And it could be more than the twenty-six thousand.
Correct. There is some stormwater. Under that task, there is some stormwater. There is septic. You can move, you know, I think ten percent around between tasks and things without having a major update. To move, it would depend on how much, basically what the cost would be. Essentially, that's the question that would be.
Any further comments?
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if the merits of the projects that we've got that we're talking about postponing. It looks to me like whether or not we reallocate some money to the removal of dead animals, does that have an impact on approving these projects? Or are these projects based upon their own merit? And I don't know if that's a question for you, or the question for the rest of the board. I, I don't know if we're just delaying a decision? Or is there a reason to delay the decision?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Brittany, if you received requests from some landowners to, to remove some of the livestock that might have died in, in the watershed area, you, you could come to us and, and ask for that strength, transfer of funding, correct?
For the change in scope of the project, yes. At the last meeting, that segment two amendment that has our scope of work typically, what's in it, and it has laid out, you know, in our charts, you know, storm water, things like that, what would happen is, we would just request for a minor change in the scope of work, and it would be contingent upon DENR's approval.
And I'm looking at lengths of time. If you mentioned sending a letter of request to Mr. Jaris, if you sent a letter that said something along the lines, should we receive requests? Can we move this? Or how, or are you just going to go ahead and set it up, but then later on, we have to move it back because we didn't get requests?
That could happen also. If we didn't get requests, yes, we could have to move it back. Essentially, all those funds would just be out there, and we wouldn't spend them. It just, it's up to the board essentially, as far as the scope of work, if you would like me to, or make a motion to, for me to make that request to DENR for that change in scope. I can certainly do that. Now, the timeframe and their procedures for that, I don't, I don't know. Typically, when we've made requests to them, that we've had a relatively quick turnaround. But, you know, it's contingent upon them. And I could have that request into them today or tomorrow.
Well, the other part of this is how, and it would, you know, if, if we had a situation like that where we wanted to remove animals, or I'm sorry, carcasses, then we would possibly be reimbursed by FEMA. And it'd be interesting to know how that might be affected if we took this action.
Right. You can't do federal dollars to federal dollars essentially. So if you use 319 federal dollars for it, then you couldn't use FEMA dollars. So it's one or, you'd have to use one or the other.
Any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to, before we have a vote on this, I'd like to have Jay think about this just a little bit. Jay, what would, do you, do you have any idea what would our responsibility be with dead livestock in the creek, or in Spring Creek watershed? Is that something that would be, come back on the county? Or is that the landowner? Or would you have an idea when I surprise you like this?
Jay Alderman with the state's attorney's office. I guess I, there's a number of questions there. One, would we have some obligation under our agreements on the Spring Creek project? I'm not aware of any. I don't think you've identified any today. You've just identified or started to vet out an idea of how some of the money could be moved around to do that. I am not aware of a county obligation to remove cattle from Spring Creek, like some kind of general obligation that, that befalls the county to take action to do that. Not aware of any. It's not a, it's not a public highway like we know, meaning that you have obligations to remove or warn of hazards and so forth on a public right of way. I'm not aware of that same obligation in this case in Spring Creek. So I'd have to say no to your concern at that issue.
Okay, so this might be just a plant to the paper if this motion proceeds. Now, if I remember right, the Spring Creek is a navigable water.
That's, I believe that's been stated here.
That state and federal responsibility?
Water rights and issues like that are affected by navigable waterways, the public's right to access, those are some of the issues that come up when you're talking navigable versus non-navigable. On the navigable waterway though, the, the state, I don't know. That's a good question. They may say that there's some issue with their responsibility for that waterway if it's navigable. Good question. I mean, that's a water rights issue that I'm not, because I've never thought of it in terms of cattle in there, dead or dying cattle, so. But I don't, I don't see an issue on the county's liability. I'm not aware of any that comes to mind.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We've had a lot of discussion about this, and I think that maybe after listening to Jay and some other information that has come up, that maybe my motion is not really needed. I guess I'd let that, I'd like to discuss that with the rest of the board.
Do you wish to withdraw the motion?
No, I think it remains to the motion that we just, we're talking about, see if, if the rest of the commissioners are maybe leaning down the same path as I am now, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I just think, I don't have a problem with doing this. I think if we can use that money differently, I'm okay with it. I'm just not sure we have enough information yet. And I think we need to get more of, we need to understand from Dustin what it does with FEMA for sure, and so on. So I, and, and what our responsibility is. I mean, I know we have the right of way responsibilities, but I think we need to have a little better understanding of, of all of them.
Well, I think that was kind of the motion, wasn't it? To run our information to what we could use that money for. I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And ma'am, do you wish to speak to the motion? Come forward.
Thank you. I'm Julie Mueller, and I've spoken before you, before. And Delia Johnson is who had called me on Friday night. And she had asked me if there was anything that I had, I could think of that could help their group, because she's part, she comes to some of our meetings. And I said, you know, the county commission meets on Tuesday, and maybe we could talk about the Spring Creek watershed issue, because if it's, these cattle are dead in the creek. And Delia was expressing to me, there were numerous cattle in the creek, and they needed help. They needed maybe the National Guard. She said she knew the governor had come in and talked about some things. But I said, you know, to me, it would be, in my opinion, a better way to spend this money if they're concerned about potential dangers in creek beds, these dead cattle rotting. And she said that she was gonna give you a call on Friday night, and I believe she did, and you guys had a nice conversation, because she called me Saturday morning at eight in the morning and told me that you were maybe gonna talk about this idea. And I, and I appreciate you talking about this idea, because these people do need help. And if, if there is any way that you can divert some of these funds to this was, to this catastrophe, these people have lost a lot of livestock. And I, she had talked to me about one young rancher alone who lost his entire herd. And they had went down into a creek bed is what she, how she had understood it. And to get rid of it, it, it's just a huge task for them. They need big loaders, they need big equipment to bury them. And she said, this will contaminate, you know, with all the water and the moisture that's gonna go down in, rotting cattle. That should be a, that should be a serious issue to everyone. So I don't know if you'd want to talk to some of the ranchers there, if you guys could meet with them. They would appreciate it. And that's all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Mr. Chair. I, I don't believe that this money can be moved to another location. I think it may be able to be used for the Spring Creek watershed that we have in the confined areas that we're talking about. But to take it and use it down on lower Rabbit Creek, I'm sure that can't be done without just giving the money back to the federal government. And if we did that, the money would be, be given to somebody in New Jersey or someplace else to spend like, like they wanted to, and then we'd be doing this under our own expense later on. It, I'm sure that it would be just like the money that's in the bank from the road from Rod, Rodford to Deerfield, can only be used for that project, and it's not used for that project that goes back to the federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dan Richer. You might want to mark your calendars, because I, I have to agree with Commissioner Davis on this. This is the best way to use this money instead of landscaping people's stuff. Let's find out if we've got cattle putrefying up there in the creek.
Does, excuse me, you, you are on the West Dakota Board?
I am, but I'm speaking as a citizen.
Has, has West Dakota addressed any of these worries?
We have not had a meeting. And we will not have a meeting until November.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Brittany and maybe Dustin also, but do you think that this money could be moved outside of the scope of the project that we're, we're in?
Typically, no. There may be some other funds within the water protection group at the state that they could allocate to other waters, anywhere in the state, whether it be in Pennington County, Mead County, Bute County, other counties. I have not talked to Pete regarding that, if he has had any requests for that due to some of it. I don't know if you have had any conversations to that fact, but it's my understanding that there may be some funds, but whether they've been requested, I don't know.
Dustin.
They say it's better to be thoughtful than open your mouth and prove it. So before I speak to this, I would have to, to talk with some folks at the DENR and figure out what, just like you asked Jay, what the legalities are as far as waterways. I honestly can't speak to that. I know from the FEMA side that under a public assistance declaration, we would not be reimbursed for any monies spent on private land. You put the waterway issue into that, and I honestly don't know how that affects it. I can certainly go effort that. When I get back to my office, I'll make a few phone calls and see what the, what the thoughts are with the state organizations that ultimately have responsibility for that. But I can't speak intelligently to, to, to what, what happens if there's a carcass in Spring Creek. I, I, I honestly don't know what, where those responsibilities lie, and what funds would be appropriate, and what would be reimbursable and not reimbursable. I honestly don't know.
Any other discussion on the motion? Thank you, Dustin.
Good morning. My name is George Farabee, and luckily, I didn't lose any critters during the storm. I'd like to remind you folks that part of those dollars are state dollars. They're not all FEMA, or not all EPA dollars. And I certainly think that the state of South Dakota, the DENR, the hundred thousand or so, and Brittany probably has more exact number than I do. But the last round, DENR kicked in some money. I was at the meeting when they kicked in the money. And it was about, oh, two summers ago, okay, for segment two. Now, unless that money is wedded to the federal money, that can be diverted. Now, as far as down, out of the watershed area, out of the project area, on down your way, Lindell, I don't, you know, that's, that's up to DENR. I'd like to speak briefly about the merits of the projects. Wind-driven rain swells Keystone Creeks. I didn't get down to take a look at the creek, but I saw it on TV and, and over one of the bridges, I think, by the holiday end. Now, I can't help but wonder what would happen in the root wads and the bundles and the rock weir and all those things, if we'd have put those in Battle Creek. You know, Battle Creek's on, on the firing line too for 319. But Spring Creek, if, just substitute Battle Creek for Spring Creek.
The motion? The motion?
The motion is to delay, and, and I certainly agree that it ought to be postponed in the, and I'll finish it this way. How can you not be aware of what's going on in the Potomac? Where $17 trillion broke. And hopefully, hopefully, the folks will get the sign from we, the people, that we've got to quit spending beyond our limits, our means. We have so overspent. This is a small bit, but you add all these small bits up, and now you've got $17 trillion bucks. We need to quit spending. These projects have zero merit. They're landscaping. And the septic, that, these are mound systems for a guy that does this for, partially for a living. Warren Alexander, we're gonna give him, what, $15,000 to put a mound system in? Thank you.
We are talking about the motion. Anyone has anything further relative to the motion? If there are no further comments?
Could we restate what the motion is?
Yes.
To postpone the action on the Spring Creek, Spring Creek advisory recommendations until such time as Pennington County can determine whether or not the 319 funds can be used to remove dead livestock in the Spring Creek watershed.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I mean, I, I know I seconded it. I'm probably gonna vote against it, because I think we already have the answer, that we would have to change the scope of it. And so maybe we should be talking about whether we're going to have Brittany try to change the scope of this or not. And I think that's where we need to be going, and not postpone it indefinitely, basically. To do what? We already got the answer, I think.
I agree.
Okay. We'll vote on the motion by roll call, just so we get it square.
Mr. Chair, I think I can solve that problem by withdrawing my motion.
Does the second withdraw? The second?
Yes.
Motion and the second have been withdrawn.
Now, what do you want to do, to get a look into it?
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
We are back to item E.
So if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, did it, if we direct you or ask you if you would get a hold of the state and, and change the scope of this, does it, that's fine, because all we're doing is expanding the scope.
Essentially, yes.
So we don't necessarily have to do it.
It's up to you. I mean, this project.
Because we're not automatically putting money into that segment of it.
Well, you could. I mean, if you wanted to change the scope, you could reallocate funds, just like when I had come to you guys earlier in the summer and asked to reallocate funds from a section of the project to monitoring because of the advisories and things. So it's kind of the same type of scenario.
I'm gonna make a motion to have Brittany check out with the state and request that we expand the scope of this as soon as possible.
So in your motion, well, is there a second?
To expand the scope to, to include retrieval of livestock carcasses in the Spring Creek Basin. Basin.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I guess I would ask the question of whether you would include in your motion the postponement of these two items, E and F.
No. I guess I agree with Commissioner Holloway that I'm not sure they're related.
So in that respect, if your motion, well, we'll act on your motion, and we still have Item E and F in front of us, okay? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Item E.
So, sorry. So the advisory group recommendations, essentially at the last Board of Commission meeting, there was a two-two tie vote on approving these two riparian applications. So it automatically gets rolled over for reconsideration at this meeting. So I guess I would entertain any questions regarding those projects again.
Tell us about the projects.
The two, they're riparian applications. One, Mr. Sullivan had disclosed, and there's information in the packet as far as, excuse me, what type of project he's looking at for stream bank protection, rip rap, some engineering, stabilization, some buffering, access control. I think on page two, under that memo, I apologize that Pete and Justin are not here to explain it better for you, but essentially, it's a portion of the cost share he's requesting, let's see, twenty-four thousand three hundred and fifty, three nineteen dollars for the project.
And that's the one that where you've got all the pictures and of the location?
Correct. And as far as the ranking, we do have a ranking that they go out and look at the site and they assess it, and it's based on the points and things. This particular project, the 105, actually ranked out at about ninety-five percent of the total point, so that's kind of how we assess, you know, as far as their potential.
Their potential what?
As far as their, for reduction of E. coli, as far as being better projects, you know, actually being.
Have we got your, have we got that assessment in here?
Um, no, I do have it on, in here.
So we don't have a copy of that assessment?
No, and I think that that might have been in the last packet, but not in this one.
I think the main reason we've altered the schedule is because of the secrecy stuff, And I see part of, part of this project calls for weed control. Is that just a one-time venture, and then it's the owner's responsibility thereafter? Or is this something?
Essentially, with those types of projects, we work with Scott Guffey, the Weed and Pest Coordinator, and basically he develops a plan to work with the landowner as part of that project.
Over a long period of time.
And all of these, the maintenance plans are typically over a long period of time there to maintain these projects for a period of time, based upon the contracts, the participant agreements. And if you look at.
Does the funding then go for an extended period of time?
No, this is a one-time, any maintenance or continued maintenance on the projects would be at the homeowner's or the property owner's expense, essentially.
Is there some kind of an agreement that's signed with the homeowner that says that they will maintain it over an extended period of time, and then some definition of what that maintenance amounts to?
If you look at the next actual item is our participant agreement, and as part of the participant agreement, basically it says that they will maintain, the project participant will maintain all best management practices implemented under this contract for the conservation practice lifespan as contained in the Natural Resources Conservation Service Environmental Quality Assentives Program General Manual. So essentially, they maintain them. That's how we have, it's under the participant agreement.
So if, if we have a major flood up in that area, and it washes out some of the trees and shrubs and rocks that we put in along the banks, then it's the homeowner's responsibility to go back in there and replace that? Do we, is, what if they just say, sorry, I'm not going to do it? What's our recourse?
I would have to look at the, I know it's written into the contract. We haven't had that happen. There has been one riparian project where the person has, took it on his own expense to replace that. Whether or not it was required of him, he did.
But you don't know for sure what that requirement is?
No, not offhand, I do not.
If I might, Jay, I'm going to put you on the spot here a little bit. But in terms of what we're talking about, stabilizing a stream bank, that sort of thing, there's been a lot of that done through Rapid City on Rapid Creek for various reasons, and some of the design was for encouraging the presence of trout in a certain place and so on. And in the mix of things, the stream, a stream, which is under the jurisdiction of the state or the feds or both, going through a piece of property, the property owner on either or both sides of the stream cannot on his own do anything to that stream bank without the consent and permission of the governing bodies. So in the mix of things, when you're talking about flood washing out this or that, in a sense, you're saying to the property owner, you just take your chances of having land that you can use if a stream goes through it. And the fact that we're going to, at some point, pay for resur surveying the line between Mead and Pennington County because of the meander of the Shiant River exemplifies that to some extent. And so to characterize this as a handout to a property owner who is willing to cost share something that he doesn't control, I think there's a different perspective than some people might have. And if I haven't suggested that in my remarks, I failed. But Jay, is there anything I've said that's wrong?
I don't believe so.
We'll make sure you get your pay.
[laughter]
But, but, you know, with all this fussing around about some of this stuff, if, if you don't understand all of the elements that are involved, you may just be wanting to sound off.
I don't think there's any question that when you have a navigable waterway where the feds and/or the state have quite a bit of say in, as an adjoining landor, riparian landowner, I don't think you can just do anything you want. And that's why I said, when you asked, is there anything you said that, no, I think you're absolutely spot on with that. I think you do have to get permission and work through programs like this or otherwise to do things on your property that is adjacent to and might affect the waterway. The high water mark, the navigability of that water, the access to that water, the use of that water, all of those things, you best be talking to some folks before you do that. So I know my answer was a little short, but no, I didn't have any objection to what you said. I think you encompassed the basic issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that we are, since we're working on a federal project here, we basically have permission to do these things in the creek, in any waterway. But once this federal project goes away, as we well know, we've had dozens and dozens of people and that, you can't work in the waterway without the Federal Corps of Engineer permit. And you have to buy that, and what's, what's the tariff for a permit from the Corps of Engineers to work in the waterway?
404. It's the 404 permit.
But is there a fee to that? I don't know.
I'm not sure, and I do know that there's also a permit with DNR.
It hasn't been very long ago that brought, came up in this commission, that was a gentleman up forty-four that bought a truckload of bags of cement, a ready creek, I'll call it, and laid them in the creek and let the water, well, the creek soak them up and turn them into cement, and he built a wall so that forced the water over on his neighbor's property. And we made him take those bags of cement out of the creek. So.
Okay, any further discussion on Item E?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to address Commissioner Holloway. Actually, as part of that participant agreement, under cost sharing, it does say that the project participant will be responsible for the costs of all best management practices, and agrees that Pennington County's obligation is limited to the cost sharing under the terms and conditions of this contract. So I guess my interpretation would be if something came out and washed it out, they would be responsible for replacing it.
Thank you.
A couple of things. Dawn, to answer your question, those of us that live outside of city limits are compelled by state law to control noxious weeds. You weren't here at the last meeting when I mentioned that. So to get points, for these landowners to get points for controlling noxious weeds, if you don't do it, you get fined. Not too many years ago, had an absentee landowner across the road from me, and I asked him, I volunteered to spray his weeds if he bought the spray, and he wasn't going to do it. So the county did it for him. As far as the division of labor, so to speak, or jurisdiction, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, as soon as, as soon as the creek, or you leave the high water mark on a creek, or any water body, and it's private property, the Curse Dad project, nineteen point eight thousand, I don't know what the division was, but we paid for a really nice fence around some shrubs, and I'm, I'm sure we leveled the ground for him. That improved the value of his property to the tune of probably ten thousand bucks. The rocks in the creek probably belong to the government. But as soon as you leave the high water mark, I don't think even Jay would disagree with me, that becomes private property. So what are we doing landscaping Darrell Sullivan's property for the tune of twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars? It's all it is of landscaping. Brittany mentioned E. coli reduction. Please, somebody tell me, tell me what rocks and landscaping, root wads, bundles, rock weirs, tell me what that has to do with reducing E. coli. We're giving Darrell Sullivan for a short stretch of creek, a very short stretch of creek in the big scheme of things, very, very small impact in the big picture. We're giving him twenty-four three. I forget the number for Warren Alexander, to do some riparian work. Why are we doing this now? The Potomac is in a disarray with spending. Winter, winter hit us early. This project can be, all these projects can be delayed till springtime. They're going to be delayed till springtime anyway. By the way, you approved Lowry's project for twenty-some thousand bucks. Sunday, I made a trip down the road, then I couldn't tell any work done. The creek was high, and probably a good thing the creek wasn't done. If there'd been any disturbed soil, you talk about mud rolling down a creek. Spring Creek is still rolling fast. Mitchell Lake could have some more mud in it. The grass, near as I could tell, that Lowry's property, the Sioux Falls millionaire, his property, near as I can tell, hasn't been disturbed yet. Do we want to disturb those creek banks between now and spring, if at all? We shouldn't be disturbing at all. Let's delay these projects until we find out what the boys and girls in Washington are going to do. Let's wait until spring. We may have winter now until May in the hills. That's where these projects are, in the hills.
Mr. Chairman, Dan Richer, maybe I shouldn't have agreed with Commissioner Davis on this last one. I'm just going to make a statement, and then I'm done. So far, near as I can tell, six hundred thousand dollars have been spent on this project. And by your own data, since 2011, the creek has gotten, gotten worse, not better, in a kilo, I'm sorry, in E. coli. There's another four hundred K that has been allocated, and I understand the DNR has offered up a hundred and fifty thousand to hire a full-time coordinator for the next three As far as the landowner having no control, this, he does have control, this is America. He could have not bought the place, could have not inherited the place, or he could move.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure for me to be here. My name is Nathan Jovic. I'm a registered professional civil and environmental engineer. I'm also a registered professional environmental health specialist. What I can tell you is that there are pros and cons of living next to a desirable area like a creek. My wife and I live next to a golf course. Most of the time, it's nice. We enjoy it. However, we had our storm last weekend, and guess what I was doing? I was removing wood and debris and whatnot from the golf course that landed in my yard. It's just something that comes with the territory. If any one of us lived next to a creek, and we had an issue of our property somehow compromising that creek, it would be incumbent upon us to get it fixed. And I wouldn't expect a government program there to help me do it. It's my responsibility. That's what this country used to be based on, personal responsibility. I think we need to try to get back to that. As far as the project, I think the premise of the project is supposed to be reduction of fecal coliform and E. coli. We've had tangential discussions about different. We've had tangential discussions about different things, meander of the waterway and whatnot. I'm not clear personally as far as what we're doing with this project, why we're doing some of the things that we're doing. You know, I think it's noble that we're, we're reaching out and trying to help people, but at the same time, we've got fiscal issues nationwide. And I don't know that we should be looking at spending money on questionable things if we don't have an idea of what we're getting as far as a bang for the buck. The gentleman before me mentioned that we've spent all this money and, and we don't know what the results are. Imagine if, if we were a business and we spent that kind of money and we got nothing, and things got worse. The, from my perspective, just based on what I've heard, and I haven't read fully the report, but I have read the full report on Battle Creek, which I think is very similar in nature. The project seems misguided. The focus that I saw was not on point source discharges, but non-point source discharges. Not sure why that was. Even though the data suggested that there was a point source discharge issue, it seemed like that was being swept under the rug in the report. I don't know why. There should have been greater focus on that. So, I, I don't know why we're doing what we're doing here. We're spending good money for questionable things with little or no results or worse results. So, I thank you for your time. I hope you reconsider what's going on with this project. And if you are looking at re-scoping, maybe that re-scoping should be going back to the drawing board and looking at point source discharges rather than doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, Mr. Chair, do we re-vote on this since it was two to two and brought forward to this meeting? How does that work? Do you make another motion? You vote on the motion as it was made last time?
Yeah, I think that motion carries over.
Okay.
So, that precipitates the next question. What was the motion?
No, I was just going to pull this out.
The first motion was to approve the riparian application S U C two zero one three P C one oh five for Darrell Sullivan.
And we had, both issues ended up the same way, is that correct? E. and F. And so the same process would exist for both. And since we've had an adequate discussion and, and so on, we will start with the motion relative to item E.
Well, unless, can we make a substitute motion?
Sure. Sure you can. Absolutely.
Well, I'm just wondering where the board is as it relates to this whole project. I mean, we voted, I guess, to have the project go, but if, if we have members of the board that are voting against a specific portion of the project, because they're against the total concept of the project, maybe we ought to back up and have a debate about the total concept of the project. Do we want to say, let's scrap this whole spring creek water management project and, and in that same motion, make a motion to send all the money back to Washington, D.C. and hope that Obama uses it to pay down the debt?
Well, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I don't tell you where I'm at on it. I do not like riparian projects. I think repairing, spending twenty-four thousand dollars on four hundred and fifty foot of the creek is a waste of money. I, I, it's not doing anything. It, it might do wonders for that four hundred and fifty feet, but above and below that, you still got the same problem. But I do like the on-site wastewater treatment because I think that, that is a, a real threat to the, to the creek if, if the septic systems are, are too close to it. That's where I'm at.
So you don't want to send all the money back? Just don't spend it on, on these short creek repair projects?
If I thought it would do any good, I'd send it back. But I tried that once and it didn't work.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So Brittany, do you, maybe we need a map based on what Ron said. I mean, where are these projects that have been completed? And are we successively moving down the creek with these projects? I mean, I recognize this is a voluntary effort on the part of the landowner. So it wouldn't mean that every landowner is going to participate. So, I, I mean, do we, do we have a map that says, okay, this one did, these two didn't, but this one did? And then, and then this one is proposed, and will it make a difference because these other two did, but a few didn't? I mean, I, I, that's kind of where we're at. We don't, if I'm hearing you right, Ron, is, is, we don't know if it's, there's enough going on that it's making a difference. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Sure. I, I guess I'll give you some background. The original segment and a lot of the money that was spent was developing plans, which is required as part of the EPA's guidance as far as getting federal dollars for these type of programs. We had to develop a stormwater plan, a septic plan. Well, we didn't have, but we did as part of this project in a ten-year strategic plan. So a lot of the funds did go to that. So, no, there isn't like a hard, you know, we did do monitoring. So moving into segment two is when we start kind of delineating areas where we think it's important for these projects to be put into place, or these B M Ps. And that's kind of where we're at right now with the ranking that we've looked at these areas and said, you know, are these going to be areas that will actually make a difference? You know, instead of these faraway tributaries and things like that. So we've focused down and, you know, in areas. And that's kind of where we are with this. And as far as like the rankings, when we say that they're ninety-five percent of the total, when the advisory group looks at it, they look at it where it is, where, you know, we had high values and things like that. And as far as the creek getting worse or better, you're, you're comparing apples and oranges. We sampled monthly and storm samples in previous years. This year, we went to GeoMean monitoring, which is a different type of monitoring that characterizes the creek a little differently and gives you more information. If we would have sampled GeoMean monitoring in the previous years, we may have seen the same things. I don't know, but to make that comparison isn't really, you know, they're two different kind of sampling techniques. Or, you know, your, your data is not apples and apples, essentially. So, that's why we've moved to GeoMean monitoring. We know what happens during storm events. We have enough data with that. That's why we've kind of brought in the projects that we have, the advisory group. You know, there was quite a few applications. They didn't really feel that there was that. All of them were warranted to get funding. They recommended four. So.
Do you have a map that shows where you've funded projects?
We do.
And, and, and the portion of the creek that has been supposedly repaired?
And I think this kind of probably, you know, to answer your question, maybe we need, Justin and I need to basically give an update now that we've come down to segment one and we, you know, those reports are drafted and present them to you. And maybe it'll answer some of these questions and concerns that you have.
I think it would be helpful to at least know where we've spent the money. And the other, the other report I'd like to see is where, where has the money been spent? You know, how much money has been spent on these segments of the creek? And how much has been spent on the planning process of this? And so totally, since we got mixed up into this business, how, how much money have we, how much money have we expended on the projects? And if I recall, I mean, Pennington County got involved in this because this had to run through some governmental agency. If we wouldn't have taken it on, it could have been some other government agency that could have administered this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, anyone could have, certainly that.
Government. It had to go through a government.
Not necessarily a nonprofit, a five oh one C three, anything that has some kind of administrative capacity to pass funds through.
If we as a board vote to get, get out of this project, somebody else can pick it up. You could have some environmentalist wackos say that they want to take it on.
If they choose, anyone can apply for this funding. I'm not any, I shouldn't say anyone, but there are criteria. But yes, if, if another agency or group wanted to.
In terms of this discussion and the circumstances we have right now, it strikes me that if we as a board need information to make a decision, whatever that might be, that we, you know, we're, we're impacting all kinds of things with our uncertainty and our questions. And if we step back, come back, say, at the next meeting with, through Holly and Jessica, Brittany, we say to, to everyone involved, this is what we need to know to decide whether to go forward, to get out, to do whatever. But to just dump the bucket today, I think we might end up wishing we had talked about it a little.
You know, I think that would be helpful for me, Mr. Chair, because what I'd like to know is how much money we've already spent, what we've actually spent it on, where, where we've spent it. So, a visual map saying, here's the segments that we've spent it on. And then how much money we got left? I mean, what are we looking at realistically on what we could, what we could actually continue to repair if we got people to participate with it? I mean, that, that would be helpful for me.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess I have to agree with Commissioner Buschgrood and Commissioner Holloway both about this situation, but I've always had a problem with the riparian repair. I haven't had a problem with septic tanks and doing those. I did have a problem in the last vote on the privacy situation where people wouldn't divulge information about where the money was being spent and what it was being spent for. The only thing that scares me, I really believe in my own mind and have dealt with government entities long enough to know that the EPA is looking for something. And I believe what they're looking for is that we will find that we have some E. coli or some other thing in the creek that they, we find with all this testing we're doing. And then the EPA is going to say, ah, gotcha. Now it's your turn. You're going to spend the taxpayers' money in Pennington County to repair whatever this may be that they, they have going. Now, I tell you, if I thought it would do any good whatsoever, I would make a motion right here today to turn that money back to the federal government and tell them to do whatever the hell they want to do with it. But I know what they're going to do with it. They're going to turn around and find another project just like this in somewhere else. And they're not going to put it against the budget or anything else. It's quite obvious that when it costs one point three million dollars to take Air Force One off the ground, they don't talk about all of those transport planes that come along behind it and all of the armored limos and all of the Secret Service. And they don't talk about Air Force Two that follows right along behind Air Force One and another three or four transport planes full armored personnel carriers and the Secret Service. So, you know, we only know this much of the story that's this big. So, I agree. We, we need to have something put in front of us, what Don was talking about, and put it on two pieces of paper instead of twenty-seven. We don't need to cut down a whole bunch of trees because we lost millions of trees the last few days. Make it very, very simple so as simple people can figure out what it says.
Okay, where are we?
So do we want to continue the decision until next meeting? And then we, so you'd want like a substitute motion to continue? Or do we just leave it and you vote it next time?
I'd make a substitute motion to continue this till the next county commission meeting. And hopefully we'll have additional information that we've talked about today prior to us addressing this project or frankly, any other project that you might be bringing forward.
That was a motion?
That was my motion.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item is item G.
Actually, item F is the participant agreement, so those will have to be, a motion will be made to continue those too because those go along with E.
I would make that motion. Second.
Motion and a second, substitute motion on item F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried, item G.
Item G is a discussion item in regards to general ag districts and limited ag districts. What it is, is we went through and reviewed it and came up with some minor discrepancies that we feel should be cleared up in regards to this, you know, certain things that are allowed under conditional use permits that are sometimes stated in the allowed section. So we listed a few in the memo, and we'd just like to go through. We had planning commission look at it already, and they said they would like to see something move ahead with amending those sections just to clear up those discrepancies. So we're looking some, for some direction from county board to move ahead, put together a proposed ordinance amendment to clear up those inconsistencies and to move ahead with also, one of your motions just at the, in the September third meeting was to address right away when it was taken out of a forty-acre tract of land. So we include that in those changes with the one ordinance amendment to address both limited ag and general ag.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't really know if this applies, but we've, we've had some discussion on the planning and zoning side about, and, and actually, I guess before the, this board, on ag tourism and adding that. Would that be part? It, it seems since we're dealing with ag, to me, it makes sense, but maybe not. But are you going to address putting ag tourism in as a, a purpose?
I, I'm certainly going to look at that, but I think we should be separate because I think there's a lot, number of other issues that need to be addressed with ag tourism.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just was curious. Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to have the planning department proceed with initiating an ordinance amendment to clean up some inconsistencies in G A D and L A D districts.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next item is item eighteen, items from the chair. And I did ask Dustin Willett, our emergency planning director, to give us a synopsis of the storm-related activities. Before you start, I can tell you that my appreciation and respect for the effort is top-notch.
Thank you, Chairman.
You did a great job.
Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Update-wise, a lot of what the county is doing, Heine spoke to earlier as far as the, the bid process and making sure that it's lump sum to meet any potential reimbursement issues that we may come into in the, in the future. To address a, a comment that, that Nancy made earlier, that I just got a call this morning from WASTA about some of the same financial kind of decisions. And the two things that I, that I tried to reiterate to, to them is something that, that I think should be at least put out there. I know everybody might know it, but we're dealing with, with two question marks in regards to all this. Heine made the statement that the work has to be done, and there certainly is a measure of work that has to be done. The two question marks that we all need to, to make sure we're clear on is, one, there's no guarantee that it will become a presidentially no guarantee that it will become a presidentially declared disaster. We meet requirements and, and given things that have happened in the past, it stands to reason that that, that designation would come, but we can't guarantee it. And even if and when that declaration is made, there is still a question mark on what FEMA will consider reimbursable. Even though we follow all the, the rules to the best of our knowledge and the, and the best we can, there's still no, just because there's a presidential declaration that, that everything we incur will be reimbursed. So I, I just did my best to try to reiterate that with, when I talk to people on the financial side of this, that there's work that needs to be done, there's funds that need to be expended, but there is no guarantee in any way, shape, or form that, that we will recover X or Y amounts. So we, we can certainly move forward and do the best we can and do our due diligence to make sure that we're eligible for anything that we may be eligible for, but I just wanted to, to throw that out there in, in regards to some of the comments that were made earlier. As far as progress, one step forward, two steps back sometimes. Tiffany Meyer with, with the Extension Service reached out to some of her comrades and, and they did a phenomenal job along with Paul Johnson out of, out of, who was tasked to the, the Emergency Operations Center and then a contractor that we hired. In regards to the removing carcasses from the Pennington County right-of-ways, they completed that on Sunday. So on Sunday before the rains hit, they had actually gone through every county right-of-way and documented, took pictures of, collected ear tags, and, and dropped those cattle in the pits. So pretty phenomenal effort by everyone involved. Where that leads us to now is there are some cattle that, that the summation is when we came by over the weekend, they were still buried in snow, and now that the snow has dropped farther, there's more carcasses being exposed. The other side of that is there are more and more and more carcasses appearing neatly lined up in the county right-of-way in, on various roads. So that's something that at, at some point is going to have to be addressed probably by the commission in terms of, of where we go with the carcasses that are either being exposed by snow or, or appearing in county right-of-ways. So we went through once and got everything we saw, and, and now there's more. So at some point, the, the commission is going to have to take that issue up. The other issue that, that will have to be taken up, that was, that was brought about at the last emergency meeting is when the county commission decides to close those pits. So those are the two outstanding issues that the commission will have to take up at some point. As far as an update, the city crews obviously are, are in full swing and are starting their, their curbside pickup program. Other counties are kind of emulating some of the stuff we're doing with carcass disposal. Heine's going full speed ahead on trying to get the, the county roads and right-of-ways cleared. And, and mother nature keeps coming. I'll be happy when spring is over and fall can get here. But if, be happy to stand for any questions.
One, one thing I'd ask you to comment on, and I, and I don't want to put you in a bad spot, but I know it has come your way and the thing that has been out there in the public are questions about the National Guard. And people saying, anything we need, we'll get the National Guard to do it, but I think you ran into some specific factors that need to be addressed.
It's a, it's a learning process. It truly is. And, and it's easy to have, it's, it's easy to jump to some conclusions and some assumptions and think that that's a resource that's available for any problem that might come down our way. Several of the key points that, that I've learned over the last couple of weeks is, and I, some of these I knew before and, and they've just been reiterated, there is no such thing as a free lunch. The Guard costs quite a bit of money to operate, especially even compared to some local resources. So the, the intent from a state level, as I've been made aware, is to completely exhaust all local efforts, including contractors. Everything that you can do locally has to be exhausted before you can consider using Guard assets. The other thing with the Guard is they certainly are applicable in, in life safety situations. So restoring power to a home in the middle of, of, of a cold snap is certainly considered a life safety issue. If we still had vehicles stuck in snowbanks, you know, out in the, in the, in the outlying areas, that would be a life safety issue. Some of the comments at my office is fielded in terms of, and I, I, I'm going to do my best not to, to put words in anyone else's mouth, but, you know, removing carcasses from a private field does not fall into the, the purview or the scope of what the National Guard should be used for. So the, the big things, and then the third thing that was really made clear to me was the fact that even if you've exhausted some of your local resources to try to get something done, there may be cases where the Guard simply isn't the most appropriate asset to try to task with, with a given situation. They may not have the right training, they may not have the right equipment, they can't do everything, their equipment isn't designed to do everything. So they still have some specific roles that they can very well fulfill and, and do a good job at. There's also some, some tasks that we might have tried to throw their way that they simply weren't equipped or, or prepared to fulfill. So the Guard isn't a, a catch-all for everything. It doesn't mean we don't ask, and I think that there are several questions that, that local government and residents and, and people have of, of how that process works and, and why some requests are approved and some requests are denied. I will say that, that during the weekend of the blizzard, when things were at their worst, we did use the National Guard for, for several missions and they, they did a fantastic job for us. And there were several missions that we, that we requested them on that, that were turned down as well for various reasons. So it's, it's not a matter of snapping your fingers and having the National Guard appear to take care of whatever ills we may want them to take care of. There, there are certainly costs involved and politics involved and, and, and multiple avenues that have to be exhausted before that resource is available. Does that speak somewhat to what you were? Okay. Seems like I talked in circles, but.
So, Mr. Chair. So at what point do they determine that local assets have been completely exhausted? Because I'm thinking of Heine putting out those contracts, and my thought on that is that there are so many people who could do that kind of work that are already committed months out. Is that ever going to be something where we could get some help?
Political wills might change, but as it stands right now, clearing debris from the county right, it's off the road, it's outside the white lines, it's still within the county right-of-way, but dealing with that debris is, is probably not going to be a mission that the Guard is tasked with. Again, I can't put words in people's mouths, and political will can change and, and different things can happen, but that's probably not an appropriate resource for that. The other thing is it, it very well, and I can't speak to this because I don't have, I, I don't have access to the figures, not that I couldn't get them, but it may, may very well be that it is more cost-effective to do that with a contractor than it would be with Guard forces.
And I get that part. My point is, we may be looking at next spring before some of those private contractors can get there to help. And, and that to me is not the best situation going into winter.
And the request can be made.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dustin, you mentioned about, I think you mentioned about closing the pits at some one stage or the other. Are we liming those critters as they go in there? Are we partially covering them to, because hopefully, we're going to have some warm weather one of these days and we could wind up with a clod infestation of blowflies and that kind of thing. So are, are we doing any of that?
I have a couple of, of calls in regarding, you brought that up at that emergency meeting, and, and I need to follow up. I've got a couple of calls in regarding lime and, and whether or not that would be appropriate, useful, effective, and, and how we would do that. I can tell you right now, nothing's happening other than dropping the carcasses into the pit.
Okay. So then that's going to determine probably if it warms up, one, we're going to have an idea about closing them. So I, I would not like to do that until everything we can possibly get in those pits are in there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dustin, you, you mentioned that there's carcasses being lined up along county right-of-ways and you were, we've already went through and cleaned up everything that we initially wanted to clean up, and you said at some point, the commission needs to address the carcasses in the right-of-way. We're not going to meet for another two or three weeks.
Well, it's not on this agenda, so I don't know if you can take action on that. The last thing was done in an emergency meeting with 24-hour notice for that specific. I, I, I don't know what the, the right way forward is.
Recommendation on what the right way forward is, or?
I can put the contractors back out on the county roads and keep picking up cows until there's no more cows to pick up, but those costs are all coming back on us. And if that's the will of the commission, I'm, I can make that happen. Right now, I've sent the contractors out, we've collected everything that was in the right-of-way, they're now waiting for me to tell them to close the pits, which is the last part that we were going to have them do. If, if you want me to move ahead with, with keeping them on the roads and, and working on picking up carcasses that, that appear in the county right-of-way, I certainly can do that.
Don't have a choice, do we? It's, it's pick them up or leave them, right? And at the last emergency meeting, we gave you the authority to go out and pick them up, right?
Right.
So you really don't need any more authority.
I'll take, I'll take those as marching orders.
That's my feeling. I, I don't know what the rest of them, but.
Well, I, I agree with you, because if we wait, if we wait three weeks.
Absolutely.
And hopefully it will warm up a little bit, it's going to be a mess and I.
Maybe I should have taken that initiative on my own, but I was waiting for, to hear some will from the commission. And not only do I agree, but I, I can certainly make that happen, but I, I wanted to make sure that, that that was, that was acceptable.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dustin, I, I agree with Commissioner Buschgrood that you were given that authority.
Okay.
The thing I would not like to see is that they're just, the contractor just out there driving the highways 24 hours a day just to run the bill up.
Correct.
So, I mean, he might find one critter today and two, two next week, but I wouldn't like to see him out there all the time.
No, we, I, I will, I will effort a, a more developed plan and, and route and time. We'll get that information disseminated so that, and, and truly what happened here is, is our intent was to help private producers. That, that was our intent, was to do what we needed to do and help our, our citizens as well. It was a win-win. And so we did put out the message that if there are carcasses on the road when we come through, we will get them. And so basically what happened is we were way more efficient and fast than I thought we would be, and we probably passed an area before people were able to, to take advantage of the help we were offering. So I, I, I know how to move forward, thank you.
And I'll reiterate what Commissioner Peterson said. You, your staff and all law enforcement, emergency, and emergency management and search and rescue, what is, what does the guy say?
There are no words.
Yep, thanks.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
When, when do you expect the snowplows to get up to Tomahawk Drive? I haven't seen them yet, so.
I live in, in Red Rock Meadows, and some of my neighbors are echoing the same sentiment, so.
Thank you, Dustin. Great job. I, under items from, from the chair, we have a, the, an alert, I guess you'd call it. We are, I was informed that we need to bring up item 11 again for some exploration. She didn't pay the bill.
We, we just received, that's the item about the reconvenance, and, and the board passed the motion to reconvey and gave till, I believe, 2 o'clock today. My understanding, and I'm speaking for Janet and she can fill in, but the individual who's coming up with the money had an insurance check, went to the bank, cashed it, and then wanted the cashier's check to bring here and buy it, but the bank said, we can't do that until it's run through. Run through is going to take beyond 2:00. So it looks like the money is there, but it's a formality. So the, the question, and Janet can fill in if I've misstated anything, is to reconsider that motion essentially to extend the 2:00 to, and I'll be quiet and let you say the piece.
And I don't know what date, because it might take a week for it to clear, it might take two weeks for it to clear. Say.
The motion though was that we will reconvey it upon payment.
By 2:00.
Oh, and it, was that in the motion?
Yes.
Just, just do noon on October 31st, that's when the interest stays the same.
I mean, we can do that.
At the, at the treasurer's discretion.
So let's, can we change the, the motion to read at noon, by noon on October 31st? And if it's not done at that time, then she's going to have to get back on the agenda and we're going to have to start all over.
So give us some guidance, Jan.
Do a, a motion to reconsider that prior motion.
I make a motion to reconsider that prior motion. We have a motion and a second? Who, who made the second?
I did.
Oh, okay. All in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
A, a motion to, great.
Not amended.
Previously noted. Amend the prior motion to allow the re, the money to be provided to the treasurer for the reconvenance no later than noon on October 31st.
I would have said that.
Second.
Through proxy, the motion has been amended. And speak for yourself when you vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Okay, back to items from the chair. I would just mention that yesterday Sylvia Christian, Ron Jeffries, and Katie Hande, Ron and Katie from Central State Fair Stock Show, and I met at, with the Economic Development Committee at the City Hall. The, we got on the agenda to report to the economic development people the, at least a general summary of the economic impact of agriculture and this storm. And it was a very worthwhile effort and just in general, and, and I said this is a very conservative figure, but when you hear the media, hear or see the media presenting numbers of dead livestock, in the case of cattle, you can just automatically conservatively say they're worth $1,000 apiece. Cows are worth more than that, but a lot of the calves, their size with the market today are bringing close to $1,000 apiece. So if you've got 10,000 dead livestock, do, do the numbers. And there may be some things happening in the community with the Chamber Egg Banquet and the Black Hills Stock Show that recognize that people have had some terrible impacts on their life and their, their well-being that should stir at least a little bit of, if not a lot, of the things that make, made this country great in the first place, and that's people stepping up to help everybody. And so, anyway, committee reports.
Before we get off of your topic, because I'm, I don't know where else to bring it up, I would like to, I would like to see us request that Jay Alderman and, and our Director of Equalization come to our next county commission meeting with some policies for us to adopt as it relates to egg, tax, or, egg land and the assessment of egg land, what is and what isn't. Specifically dealing with the principal use, because I think that's still a big question out there. There's been some things thrown in, you know, we got this, this little proposal here that tries to give a definition of principal use, but it leaves a great big hole when it excludes the existence of a residence. And so I think that's a big hole. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see some policies coming back to this board, dealing with those definitions, so that our Director of Equalization can appropriately go out there with our backing to address these problems that brought this whole thing to the forefront in the first place. Secondly, I'd like our Director of Equalization to report to us on his staffing, because I think it's, you know, I don't know what kind of staff he's got to assign to this ag issue, but I think it's a big enough issue that we need to make sure that he either assigns his staff appropriately to address it, or if he doesn't have enough staff to come and tell us why he doesn't have enough staff to address it. But I think part of what's brought this thing to the forefront was probably us not having policies, and my discussion with Shannon was, well, you know, after you get cut down at county boards a couple of times on your, on their determination on a piece of property of whether it's ag or not, you finally just start going along with what the county commission has done in the past. I think that's a cop-out on his part personally, but, but I, you know, I just don't want to see us, now we've rolled it back to the 40 acres, everybody's happy, nobody comes to the meetings, and we continue down the same damn path that we were before. I don't think we would have got to this point had, had our assessor's office been going out and looking at these questionable properties over the years, and they haven't, obviously they haven't. We need to make sure that they do.
Good thought, and I think Holly was taking notes, and that'll happen. So, thank you, Don. Okay, committee reports. Mr. Chair, we've talked enough. What committee were you on that you talked about lots of them? I think Nancy, your committee meets tomorrow morning at 9:00, Extension Building. Okay? Any other committee reports? If not, items from the public.
First, I want to thank you for delaying, or at least giving some more thought to the waste of money out in Hill City area. If I could, I'd like to briefly address Ken Davis's point about the EPA coming back on the county or anybody. As I understand the law, and obviously I could be wrong, but there's point source and non-point source. The law says, as I read it, a point source of pollution, EPA has the power from Congress to go ahead and demand mitigation of that problem. And maybe that's what we need. We need, hopefully they will find a point source someplace. I hate to say this, but Hill City is the point, if there is any pollution of any consequence, it's not a septic here, and a septic over there, and a septic over here. The bulk of the people are in Hill City, especially in the summertime. Now, their plant is up, and it's a fine plant. I've gone through it, and there's no doubt in my mind they discharge almost drinkable water, maybe drinkable water. But just like Rapid City, they've got some leaky sewer lines. Guaranteed they've got leaky sewer lines, just in the last couple of years, they found some leaky, okay? And the other thing is stormwater. And the old lagoons, anytime it rains, those lagoons is residual there. So to me, Hill City is a point source. Now, whether or not EPA would consider the entire geographical area of Hill City a point source, I don't know. But the non-point source, EPA does not have the authority to come in and say, "Hey, we think, Ken, we think that you're septic up there, we think it might be polluting Rapid Creek." They don't have the authority to come after you. They may try to. That's my understanding of the law, point source versus non-point source. And golly, I hope that somebody checked the pits. And I'm asking, I don't know, did somebody have, somebody with some kind of knowledge of the underground structure before they dug those pits for the cows?
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying? That's one heck of a long time source. To me, I'd just spread them out, just for the fact that if you did make a mistake, that's a lot of potential contamination for a good, long period of time. Anyway, I really feel sorry for the guys, obviously, and I'll leave you with this, the Saturday's paper. I think you all know how I feel about government spending. Government just spends and spends. Food stamps, quote, "I was mad and devastated and a little bit confused because we need our benefits." This is a 31-year-old gal. She's saying that she has the right to stick her hand in my pocket to feed herself. That's just wrong. That's just wrong, and that's not the way any of us grew up. Nancy's a little younger, but the rest of us didn't grow up that way. A 55-year-old gal, quote...
I'm fooling you, George.
Well, just go out on, you know, that's your prerogative, and I won't interfere, but, quote, "When they cut my food stamps, they cut my pride in being a human being," and boy, I almost puked.
That's sad.
Well, you should have read the one where the guy said that my mother's 90 years old, and she can't clean up her backyard and the trees, and so the government shouldn't come in and do it. What's the matter with him? Instead of wasting his time writing with a pencil, he should have been out there cleaning it up.
Right, absolutely, and as far as Air Force One, blowing the money is just, boy, I tell you what, I just have to look the other way. And when, when that guy, and I hate to call him a guy, but when he said, "At your son's dead or your daughter's dead, come and get her," at Dover, that was over, that was over the top for me. That was just plain over the top. And you know damn well he was behind it, anyway.
We need a motion to go into executive session, so move. Your second? Motion is second to go into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Motion to come out of the executive session is your second. Moved by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Troutman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Patrick?
Thank you. After our discussion, an executive session, I'd ask for a motion from the commission to allow the state's attorney's office to seek, to seek at our discretion an injunction against the present owner of 2151 Plateau Lane for the removal of structures encroaching into the right-of-way.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Nope.
Wonder what else we got to do?
Quit. I mean, I mean, adjourn. That was the word I was looking for.
Did you move that, or?
Yeah, I moved it.
Who seconded it? Commissioner Busker, seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.